Good evening. The time is 6:00 P. M. We are going to begin tonight's council meeting. Before I officially call the meeting to order, I would like to begin by reading the city's land acknowledgement. The West Hollywood City Council acknowledges that the land on which we gather and that is currently known as the City of West Hollywood is the occupied, unceded, seized territories of the Gabriolino Tongva and the Gabriolino Kish peoples. I'll call this meeting of the April 7, 2025 City Council meeting to order. It's 6:00 P. M. And will Henry Friedman please join us and lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the reflag for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Henry. City Clerk, may we, sorry, may we please have a roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Hang.
Here.
Councilmember Meister.
Here.
Vice Mayor Heilman.
Here.
Mayor Byers.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to move into approval of the agenda. Are there any changes from staff on the agenda, City Clerk?
No changes from staff.
Terrific. Do my colleagues have any changes?
I'm wondering if we could move items F1, F3, F4, F5, and F6 to consent.
Will you say that one more time? F1?
F1, F3, F4, F5, and F6.
No issues there? Any other items from any other colleagues?
Is there a will to go-go to F2 to consent?
Well, I'm wondering if we could talk about that when we talk about the Rainbow District.
Sure.
Beautiful. That sounds great. So F1, F3, F4, F5, F6 will all be moved to consent and will combine items F2 with item E1? Is that right?
Yes.
Yes, with item E1.
And Mayor, I just wanted to note that I am not ready for a number of our commission and advisory board appointments.
Okay. So we will do what we can with that noted. Thank you. We have a motion to approve the agenda. Second. Do we need to do that by voice vote instead?
If you don't mind, for this time, we'll clear it up for the next one. Councilmember Erickson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hang.
Yes.
Councilmember Meister.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Heilman.
Yes.
Mayor Byers.
Yes.
So we have an approved agenda. Thank you all so much.
And Mayor, for the record, could I, who was the first and second, please?
It was Vice Mayor Heilman and Councilmember Erickson seconded it.
And I appreciate everyone's patience. Granicus did not update before this the report of the closed session. If we could have our Assistant City Attorney provide that, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council met in closed session to consider the posted agenda item. Direction was given to initiate litigation. Upon inquiry, the particulars will be disclosed after litigation formally commences. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much and welcome. We will move on to Levine Act disclosures. Can my colleagues review the agenda and report on any disclosures you may have? Nothing tonight?
Nope.
Terrific.
No disclosure.
Okay. Then we'll move on to adjournment motions. I know we have a few of these tonight. If I can, I'd like to begin with Councilmember Erickson.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have three for tonight. First, I would like to adjourn in memory of Christine Chin Ryan. She was an amazing person, advocate, and member of the National Organization for Women Board, as well as her state and local chapter. I had the pleasure of serving with her both as the Western District Rep when I served on the National Organization for Women Board as that individual. And now I have a, now as I serve on the National Organization for Women PAC Board, I served with her in that. She died very after a long battle with cancer. Additionally, I would like to adjourn in memory of Joan S. Liebman, who was born in New York to Morris and Ida Sosales and was a younger sister to Isabel. She graduated from Syracuse University with a degree in political science before her 20-year career at Walter Reed Junior High School in Los Angeles as co-chair of the English Department. She is predeceased by her husband, Mike Liebman, and her daughters Nina and Marjorie. She is survived by her daughter Abby and her beloved grandchildren Phil and Laura. In lieu of flowers, please consider a donation to the Oregon Shakespeare Festival or the Democratic Congressional Campaign Committee. May her memory be a blessing and sending all of her love to Laura and the family as well as Abby. And then last, but certainly not least, I would like to adjourn in memory of Patricia Edna Schaefer, who passed away at age 82, surrounded by her family on March 13, 2025. A lifetime resident of Kokona, Wisconsin, on August 29, 1970, she married Bob Schaefer at St. Mary's Church, celebrating 54 years of marriage. Pat enjoyed passing on her joy of gardening and traveling to her grandchildren, reading and watching old VHS tapes of her favorite TV shows. She loved attending her grandchildren's sporting and school events and supporting her son's passion for coaching volleyball, who was my coach throughout my life at the University of Wisconsin-Oscar. And Pat was always there cheering us on in the stands and one of the loudest people, even though she was short in stature but mighty in voice. She is preceded in death by her in-laws, Cletus and Betty. Schaefer sisters Elaine and Carol Van Rossum, brothers Roger Feldcamp and Cletus Feldcamp, brother-in-laws Alan Vanderloop, Bob Hess and Ron Vandenberg, nephew Todd Feldenkamp and niece Lori Feldenkamp. In lieu of flowers, a donation to Children's Hospital is being requested by the family. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Erickson. And I'll go over to Councilmember Meister.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Lawrence Shambly. This is so sad. He's a longtime West Hollywood West resident, Huntley Drive resident, and also was Secretary of the West Hollywood West Residents Association Board, a former U.S. attorney. He was an avid hang glider and cyclist. He died yesterday in a solo bike crash. And we all send our deepest condolences to his partner, Kimberly Winnick. And the neighborhood will miss him very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Are there any other adjournment motions? Councilmember Hang?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Renee Kimberling. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Renee Kimberling, the beloved grandmother of Jacob Shaw, who was a dedicated business owner in West Hollywood and owner of Beaches and Beaches Tropicana in West Hollywood's Rainbow District. Renee Kimberling was born on September 11, 1947. She was married, she married her husband Larry at 18, and together they raised two children, Candace and Terry. A devoted mother, Renee later followed her passion for nursing, earning a Master of Science from Pepperdine University and becoming a nurse practitioner. She served over a decade at Loma Linda University Hospital and went on to become Director of Nursing at Norco College before retiring. She is survived by her two children, eight grandchildren, including Jacob, and seven great-grandchildren. Renee was the heart of her family, always encouraging her loved ones to follow their dreams. Tonight, we honor her legacy and the love she shared to make the world a better place. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Heilman? I will just also add, we will adjourn in memory of the earthquake victims in Myanmar. More than 3,600 lives have been taken in that disaster, which has made difficult in terms of recovery by many factors, including limits on international aid at this time. So we remember those lives in addition to all the ones you've uplifted tonight. Thank you all so much. And now we'll move into presentations. We have three, and we're going to get started by recognizing a very special guest who helped us kick off our meeting tonight and helped us with the Pledge of Allegiance. So come on back up, Henry Friedman, so we can recognize you with a photo with the council. Okay, we'll continue on with presentations. We have two. And first, we're going to recognize our Green Business Program recognitions. So it is my honor, it is Earth Month this month, to acknowledge and celebrate the inaugural group of businesses that have achieved the business, Green Business Certification through our city's Green Business Program. West Hollywood has long been a leader in environmental sustainability, and our participation in California Green Business Network underscores our commitment to fostering a vibrant and healthy green community. The Green Business Program was established in 2024 April to acknowledge the proactive steps businesses take to integrate sustainable practices into their operations. It provides customers with a clear way to identify and support these environmentally conscious enterprises. We recognize that a healthy and diverse local economy thrives when we attract and support businesses that are dedicated to implementing sustainable practices that offer economic, social, and environmental benefits. Our Green Business Program provides free assistance to businesses, including step-by-step guidance from sustainability experts and access to resources and tools to help them achieve certification. Additionally, the city offers rebates of up to $1,500 to qualifying businesses to offset costs associated with implementing green measures. Folks can learn more about the Green Business Program by visiting the city's website. This evening, we're excited to have in attendance a number of the following businesses and have the opportunity to commend them for their dedication to sustainability and their active participation in West Hollywood's green business community. I'm going to name a number of the businesses that have achieved that level, and I know just a few are with us tonight to celebrate, but we'll have you all up to join us in just a moment for a photo. So tonight, we're recognizing Adakama Homes, Capital Drugs, Javista Coffee, Pura Vida, Sweat Yoga, The Woods West Hollywood, and Soho Works. These businesses have set a high standard for environmental stewardship in our city. Their efforts not only contribute to a healthier planet, but also enhance the quality of life in West Hollywood. We are proud to have them in part, or as part of our community and look forward to their continued leadership in sustainability. Congratulations to all our certified green businesses, and thank you for your commitment to a greener future for West Hollywood. We'll have those in attendance tonight come up. We have some certificates for most of you, and we'll take a photo with the council now. Thank you again.
Yeah, please, I would love that.
Thank you so much for honoring these businesses. I just wanted to say, I'm Susie Borlito. I'm the administrator of this program. I work with Paige and Christine. And West Hollywood is the 52nd jurisdiction in the state of California to join the California Green Business Network. So this program is a part of a statewide initiative to reduce water, save energy, reduce waste, recycle, give back to the community. And I just wanted to thank council members in City of West Hollywood for joining the network and for bringing this program to West Hollywood. We still have a couple spaces left. If any businesses would like to join, just do a search on City of West Hollywood Green Business Program, and you can register. And thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you to the work of you and the team here and all the businesses who participate. We really appreciate you helping make a greener future for West Hollywood. And next, we'll move on to our final presentation of the night. Very important proclamation for National Poetry Month. It is National Poetry Month. It is also National Arts Advocacy Month, so it's a great time. And we are so proud to recognize this with our poet laureate tonight. So I'll begin with our proclamation. Whereas National Poetry Month is a month-long celebration of poetry and its vital place in our culture, held every April since it was inaugurated by the Academy of American Poets in 1996. And whereas National Poetry Month reminds the public that poets have an integral role to play in our culture and that poetry matters. And whereas the City of West Hollywood has a long tradition of supporting the literary arts, as demonstrated through its presentation of its WeHo Reads Literary Series and the creation of the West Hollywood City Poet Laureate Program in 2014. And whereas, since 2014, the city has celebrated National Poetry Month by hanging street pole banners honoring living poets, with the current city poet laureate choosing two new people to honor each year. And this year's honorees being Teresa Mai Chuk and K. B. Brookins. And whereas, in 2023, Jen Chang was inaugurated as the fifth West Hollywood City Poet Laureate. And as part of the city's official National Poetry Month activities, she is leading a poetry writing activation called Poetry Scramble on April 19, 2025. So now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of West Hollywood hereby proclaims this month, April 2025, as National Poetry Month in the City of West Hollywood and encourages community members to take part in this celebration. So at this time, we'll have Jen come up and take a photo with us, our poet laureate, and then say a few words at the dais.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council members and city staff. It is my great honor to serve as your poet laureate. And I invite the community and our visitors to please take a look up in the lamp posts, where you can see not only the poetry banners have the faces of living poets, but quotes that might inspire you or give you a lift in your day. It's along Santa Monica Boulevard and in front of our library. And speaking of the library, we have a number of programs happening to celebrate poetry this month, in addition to the one I'm hosting on Saturday, April 19, 11 to 1. In person at the library is Poetry Scramble. If you like playing with poetry magnets along your refrigerator, we're going to make a community poem together. That's exciting. The other two programs we have going on related to poetry is Wednesday, April 16, online, for those of us who are running around, online with Richard Blanco and former poet laureate Kim Dower. And another program with our inaugural poet laureate is on April 26 with Stephen Rains in person at the library from 1:00 to 4:00 P. M., teaching autobiographical poetry. Thank you again, City Council and community members, for helping us celebrate National Poetry Month. And this is the poem I've written to celebrate our city for this special occasion. Eternity. We poets write toward eternity, unpacking burdens and adversity. Despite the strife, we write into the light, tumble through exquisite sunset dreams, knit riddle with rhyme and embroider the scene. Tally up time on Route 66, count the winks of the moon. Care for the heart before grief breaks us too soon. Archive recollections before they're disposed. Salvage our souls, alchemize rainbow jewels more precious than gold. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll move into public comment. If you haven't yet signed up, please see our city clerk to do so. The City Council values your comments. However, pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot take action on items that have not been listed on the posted agenda. The public comment period is limited to 20 minutes, with two minutes allocated for each speaker. This public comment period is to address the City Council on consent calendar items. Other agenda items, if the member of the public cannot be present at the time the agenda item is considered, or items of general interest within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Another period is also reserved for general comment later in the meeting for those that could not be heard at this time. Public hearing testimony will only be taken at the time of a hearing. If you signed up to speak on both consent calendar items and general public comment, as well as an item that was moved to consent, you may take this public comment period to speak on consent calendar items. You may also sign up to speak during the second public comment period for your general public comment. Lastly, speakers should not bring any items to the podium other than a prepared written statement or writing materials. Madam City Clerk, how many speakers do we have signed up tonight?
We have 14 in chambers and none in Zoom so far.
Okay, terrific. We will take them. I have the list in front of me, so we'll start. And I'll read the first couple of names so people can be prepared. We'll take Andrew Solomon, then Jordan Beard, and then Mikey Friedman after that.
Good evening, council members, mayor, vice mayor. Andrew Solomon, City of West Hollywood. This got moved to consent, so I'll be fast. I want to thank you all for your support on the item to paint our bike lanes green. Two things that I'll say really quickly. It's not just about our bike lanes, it's also about our sidewalks. People ride their scooters on the sidewalks because they don't feel safe riding in the bike lanes. It is a jungle on them. It is, I'm on them every day. It's difficult. People shouldn't ride their scooters on the sidewalk. Hopefully, if we make our bike lanes a little safer, we'll move them over. And then the second thing I would say is that while the intention of this is good and we all look forward to it, I know that we have a lot of bike mobility projects in the pipeline, and I'm just very hopeful that this is an easy and simple step and it won't further delay some of the items that have been passed in the last year that we're all looking forward to. So again, thank you for the support tonight. That's all.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jordan Beard, followed by Mikey Friedman, followed by Chad Kroger after that.
Good evening, council. I would just like to also voice my support for item F1. And I think it's a simple proposition to paint our bike lanes green, like many other cities nearby have done. It'll make riding a bike in West Hollywood safer and makes more people interested and perhaps comfortable biking here. There are many residents who would like to forego driving for some trips but do not feel safe riding a bike on our streets. Class 2 striped bike lanes in West Hollywood are often ignored by drivers and are frequently blocked by double parked cars or oversized vehicles that are too wide for parking spots. The full length of these bike lanes is effectively a conflict zone, and I think adding bright paint will hopefully reduce the number of door and crashes in the city. I don't think we're doing enough to protect bike lanes, or to protect bikers on this stretch, especially from La Cienega to Alvin. on this stretch, especially from Los Yenega to Almont on Santa Monica Boulevard. Over the last decade, 220 people biking have been injured in car crashes on that stretch. Oh, sorry, in the city. Sorry, let me start again. Over the past decade, 220 people have been injured by cars while biking in West Hollywood. Of those crashes, about one-third have occurred on the one-mile stretch of unpainted bike lanes that run along Santa Monica Boulevard. That is an outsized representation. We have about, I think, like 40 miles of roadway in the city, and on one mile, there is a third of our crashes. So I think this item is a no-brainer. It's aligned with best practices, improves safety and visibility of existing bike lanes, and is low cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mikey Friedman, followed by Chad Kroger and J.T. Parr.
Mikey Friedman, WeHo. WeHo Online had an interesting article, which I agree with. It said that you, like Trump, are governing by decree, like pushing through the hotel worker ordinance with little discussion or study. I watch you during public comments. You kind of get through them, many times not even looking at the commenters. Instead of choosing difficult topics, tonight we're going to have Go-Go Dancer Day and expensive consultants for Beverly Boulevard bike lanes that we don't want. But you don't ask us what we do want, you just push through your silly stuff. How about discussing getting the scooters and robots, the homeless, and the crime off our streets, and fixing the sidewalks? The DAB just received a delivery robot report that said you will quickly widen the sidewalks for the robots, but not for our ADA equal access. Next, colorful garbage cans and crosswalks are not going to bring tourists to West Hollywood. Bars and cannabis lounges are not going to bring daytime business to West Hollywood. We need diversity. Little shops where everyone can spend money in WeHo, day or night. But labor costs and rents are so high that they're killing small businesses. What about authorizing a moratorium? And then there's Sunset Strip. It's got a rich history, but you only care about its cash cow billboard, so it's dying. Finally, as an ESL teacher, I taught English to immigrants four nights a week so that they could get better paying jobs. I see the Unite Here folks come here unable to speak English. Does Unite Here offer their hotel workers ways to get into education programs so that they don't always have to clean toilets for minimum wage? Actually, why don't you City Council majority go back to school too, like Lauren did, to learn how to run a city? Thank you.
Thank you. We have Chad Kroger, followed by J.T. Parr, followed by Kelly Polarski.
What up, council? My name is Chad Kroger. We just got back from Vegas. Yeah, thanks to my college buddy DJ Milkman, who's now a retired DJ and works in venture capital, we got to kick it with none other than Kygo. We're buds now. He gave us a sneak peek at his new day club, the Palm Tree Beach Club, opening this summer. We had a little private soiree, and it was the best day party of our lives. One thing I admire about Kygo is his respect for palm trees. It made me realize, I can never be bummed if there's palm trees. Palm trees symbolize the good life. They're tall, majestic, and they're part of the In-N-Out logo. We're so lucky we get to experience them from day to day. For now. Angelinos, palm trees are going extinct. They are under threat from disease, wildfires, and nutritional deficiencies, and we need to do our part to start a movement to protect LA's most precious feature. If we don't, we could become a city devoid of stoke, like San Francisco. That is why I'm proposing we make May Palm Tree Awareness Month. Together, not only can we have a sick session Vegas with Kygo, but we can also do our part to protect LA's favorite tree. Be valla palm tree. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second public comment?
What up, council? I am also here to talk about palm trees. As Chad said, they're going extinct in LA, and a lot of people are okay with it because they require a lot of water and provide little shade. Good points, but also myopic. If you've ever watched a Tupac music video, you'll know how essential the palm tree is to the vibe. A lot of people in this city, and even people on this council, don't give a hoot about the vibe. I was at Coachella when they did the Tupac hologram. It was literally one of the sickest days of my life. No lie. That is why, council, I am proposing that in the place of our palm trees, we put up a 70-foot hologram of Tupac all over our city. It'll maintain the vibe while also protecting the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, we have Kelly Polarski, followed by Scott Hatcher, then Rick Watts.
Good evening, council. How are you? My comment here, I'll start with agenda item F1. I wanted to speak in favor of this item, so thank you for putting it on the agenda. Obviously, the city is all about enhanced visibility and raising awareness. So this is an exceptional opportunity to do just that for both cyclists and for drivers. Ultimately, our city wants to promote healthy wayfinding and healthy space for everyone that comes through our city and is here. So thank you for that on the agenda. I also wanted to take a little bit of time. In my industry, in construction, we do, we start every construction meeting with a safety moment, and I thought it would be wonderful if we could have a conversation about pedestrian safety today with all these lovely people here to listen. So pedestrians are people and drivers are people, so we're all one. And after almost being hit by a monster truck in a crosswalk today, I'd like to just remind everyone that pedestrians have the right of way. Please don't stop, I'm sorry, please don't pass a stop car when there is a crosswalk because there is likely someone in the crosswalk walking. I had to help three of my neighbors cross the street today because two of them almost got hit by drivers turning on red. So please remember that if you are in a car and the light turns red, come to a complete stop before you turn. And the other thing I wanted to mention is enhanced driver awareness. Please do not be on your phone when you're coming to a stoplight. It's really important that you see everyone that's in that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Scott Hatcher, followed by Rick Watts, and then Steve Martin.
Good evening, council. I'd like to say for F5, I think it's great that you guys are writing a letter for the HIV prevention, and that I hope that WeHo continues to fund that initiative as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Watts, followed by Steve Martin, and then Elon Meyer.
Thank you, council. Rick Watts, City of West Hollywood. And I'd like to echo everything that Kelly just said and a couple of others regarding F1. And I support that measure. Anything that we can do to make it safer for cyclists to be on the street and for them to, them and the scooters, to stay off of the sidewalks, I support that. As if in Q, during late afternoon rush hour on March 27th, the day after the Disability Advisory Board meeting, as I was turning northbound on Sweetsur into our building's garage entry driveway, this delivery robot traveling up the middle of the 65-inch-wide sidewalk suddenly decided to stop partway across our driveway entrance, preventing me from fully pulling off of the street. It would neither continue forward out of my path nor back up so that I could proceed. It just sat there. I couldn't finish entering our garage or get out of traffic, nor could I go back out of the driveway into the busy northbound traffic. And anyone in our garage trying to get out was likewise stuck inside until I could get the damn thing to move, which it never did. I finally got out of my car and tried in vain to get it out of the way, but ultimately, one of our bigger neighbors came out to help me just kind of muscle it off the sidewalk. In the meantime, though, the northbound traffic was having to divert into the southbound traffic to get around the back of my car, and the neighbor wishing to exit couldn't. And I was made late to pick up my 82-year-old neighbor to take him to his tax person. I called the company listed on the back of the robot and complained, giving them the location. And after picking up my neighbor, later on, they eventually were there. But I mentioned that 24-inch, that robot is 24 inches wide, and if it's traveling up the middle of the sidewalk, as it does, there is not enough clearance for a wheelchair or a walker, or anybody with sight, mobility, hearing, or cognitive impairments to safely get around it. They don't belong on the sidewalk. You're going to be going over this issue on May 9th, and I wish you would...
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Steve Martin, followed by Elon Meyer, followed by Paul Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think we should hire J.T. and Chad as the spokespeople for the Sunset Strip. I think they're very relatable. I did appreciate hearing from the poet laureate. I have to admit, I'm something of Philistine. The only poem I actually know involves a man from Nantucket. Anyway, that's not why I came here to speak. We are, as we know, we're being battered in a number of areas, but among them with tourism. And our neighbors to the north have long been patrons of West Hollywood hotels, and I understand the Visitors' Convention Bureau is going to take a trip to Canada to promote West Hollywood hotels. That's great, but I don't think it's enough. And I think we need to act more aggressively with a sense of gratitude toward our Canadian neighbors, as well as an act of resistance. Because I think that if we do an aggressive program that thanks the snowbirds, that puts Canadian flags up and down Santa Monica Boulevard and Sunset, we've set a week or two to promote tourism here, I think we'll get national, international attention because we need to be the good neighbors. We need to appreciate our neighbors to the north. I mean, I know Canada didn't give us Taco Tuesday or guacamole, but they have shown us a healthcare system that works. So I think that we can really extend some appreciation, and I think we should do so more aggressively, spend some money, and you guys can get yourself out there where you belong. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elon Meyer, followed by Paul Nichols, and then Anthony Vulan.
Yes, thank you. Hi, everybody. I'm here to alert you to a sense of unsafety in our neighborhood. I live in the Norma Triangle, and recently, there's been a slew of burglaries. Just yesterday, there was a robbery attempt on Dohini. And I have a feeling that that has to do with the fact that our neighborhood is adjacent to all the bars and maybe needs to be given special consideration. When you look at the statistics citywide, you sometimes see reduction in crime, but when you begin to look at regions where things are not improving, we're often in that region. We had a neighbor who was burglarized, two of them, actually, maybe two months ago, and recently, my husband saw him move, and he asked him, "Why are you moving?" And he said, "Oh, I thought when I moved here, this was a safe neighborhood." And I have to say, that really stung, because I always thought it was a safe neighborhood. I was recently walking up the street on Hilldale, and a young man came to proposition me, which I don't think was a genuine proposition attempt. It was more, looked like a hunting or fishing attempt. And I quickly walked away from him. He was alone. But again, I feel like that area right next to the bars, moving up Hilldale, can be given more attention and perhaps involving the ambassador program. I've never seen them in our neighborhood for sure. So just people around about, the experience that I had was around 9:00 p.m., so it wasn't like very late or anything. And people around, the burglary attempt into our, next door to our house were, I think, like 5:30 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. And our Director of Community Safety is in the back, if you'd like to stop and ask any specific questions.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Paul Nichols, followed by Anthony Vulan, and then Robert Brzoszky. Hi there.
Hello, council. My name is Paul Nichols. I've lived in West Hollywood for 25 years and thrown thousands of events here. And I'd like to speak in favor of two items. Number one, thank you for your support in pursuing the Rainbow District. I think it's so important to the businesses on Santa Monica Boulevard and also to maintaining the identity of our city and who we are as a community. You know, when I see things on there, for example, like the movie night, I think the one thing I always say as a queer person is our history starts the day we come out. Our family doesn't teach us our history because they don't really know we're gay until we figure it out. And I think having things like that, where the community can come together and watch an LGBTQ movie or something that covers our history, will serve a great purpose to also educate members of the community on the different aspects of our community. Because again, to a certain extent, we don't grow up being gay, so we kind of figure it out as we go along. I'd also like to speak in support of Go-Go Appreciation Day. I was trying to think, how do I best illustrate my support of Go-Go Appreciation Day? You know, I've hired thousands of Go-Go dancers, booked tens of thousands of Go-Go shifts. I guess I could be considered an expert on the matter. My dad wanted to be a lawyer, but hey. And I think one thing, when we give the Go-Go dancers their orientation, I always kind of give them the same speech. And I say, "Listen, I want you all to know that you're part of this team, you're part of this family, you're equally important to what we do here." And I would say, "Well, I always treat you that way. The only thing I ask of you is when you get off your box and you're walking to the dressing room, stop and say hi to somebody, pay them a compliment, maybe the guy in the corner that looks like he's been shy, or somebody who was nervous to come up to you, and just say something nice to them. You like their hair, you like their t-shirt." And that's all I ask of you. And I've had, over the years, so many people come up to me telling me about how they're having the worst day, or they just broken up with their boyfriend, or they were depressed at work, and that person coming up to them, who they idolized in a way, and saying something to them just changed the course of their day, their week, you know, some people their life. And I think it's important to acknowledge them as members of our community and the contributions they make to members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Vulan, followed by Robert Brzoszky, followed by Maurice Newhouse.
Hi, good evening. My name is Anthony Vulan. I'm a resident of West Hollywood and 22-year Realtor. I wanted to speak on item F6, which has moved to the consent agenda. And thank you for recognizing Fair Housing Month, which commemorates Fair Housing Act of 1968. While this is something to celebrate, it's also something that needs to be amended. A lot of people don't realize that the Fair Housing Act does not include gender identity or sexual orientation. And though it's protected in California, there are many, many states that don't protect these classes. And I have so many countless stories of how awful that is when people are trying to find housing for rent or purchase. That is just awful. So I stand here today just to remind everyone and encourage everyone that we need the Equality Act passed. This would amend the Fair Housing Act to do that. So when you have the opportunity to speak with our federal legislators, please don't let them forget about this. And please remind them to please pass the Equality Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Brzoszky, followed by Maurice Newhouse, and then followed by, I believe, our last speaker, Michael Green.
Good evening. I too, similar to Elon Meyer, wanted to talk about public safety. I live in the Norma Triangle, and I don't feel safe in my neighborhood anymore. I've lived there originally in 2007 for a couple of years, moved back in 2012 and bought my home on Vista Grande Street. And it seems, probably since last summer, last fall, every other week, someone's texting me about something that happened in our neighborhood, a burglary or robbery, or somebody held up at gunpoint. We have spent a lot of money upgrading the security system on our home. We have private security monitoring. We have cameras that are monitored in the evenings. But I'm not seeing, what's concerning me is I'm not seeing any more police patrol in our neighborhood, despite the fact that the data from the Sheriff's Department, which I appreciate, shows that crime is up on the west side. But I'm not seeing any more patrol. I never see those block-by-block people in our neighborhood. And I know it looks very peaceful and quiet 90% of the time, but there's stuff happening, bad stuff. And it's, you know, sometimes it's 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon. It's not even, it's not even late at night. So my partner and I are walking our dogs with pepper spray. We're looking over our shoulders all the time. It's pretty scary, and it never was that way before. And so I really would like, would like some support. The window on my partner's car was smashed right in front of our house, directly... directly under two mega-security cameras that are attached to the Lloyd Wright House on, on Dohini and Vista Grande Street. We were told that the crime would be investigated. We were never contacted. We reached out to the investigator. We never followed up. We never found out what happened in that particular instance. And so I would like to see more patrol, more block-by-block, a little more attention, since the crime is up in, in our side of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And before you leave, Lieutenant Lapkins in the back of the room, if you want to try to have a conversation about some follow-up.
Yes, we will.
Thank you so much. Maurice Newhouse, followed by Michael Green, and then I think we have some speakers on Zoom now. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maurice Newhouse. I am Robert Brzoski's husband. And I just wanted to show up, because I thought there's, you know, power in numbers. And of course, I have the same concern as my husband. I don't really feel safe in our neighborhood anymore. And I see no increase in police presence, unfortunately. There was a period, maybe two years ago, where for a brief moment, we had a little bit more police cars driving around. But it just seems like a breeding ground for crime, with the bars being right there, Sunset Strip is right above. There's, it's, we're between like two major avenues and lots of hotels. And I think the people who are coming in, you know, committing these crimes are prowling on tourists as well. So, you know, if word gets out that you're getting, you know, smashed, or like, you know, violated when you're, you know, living or visiting West Hollywood, it's probably not going to look good for our city either. So I'm just really hoping that you'll take this seriously and maybe connect with the police department and, and see if there's any way for them to increase, you know, surveillance or like patrol in our neighborhood. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Michael Green, I believe, is our final speaker in council chambers tonight. And then we have somebody on Zoom? No? I got a tech. Okay. Thank you, sorry, go ahead.
Hi, a couple of things. First thing, before the block-by-block program gets renewed, I think the city should conduct an independent evaluation of the program's effectiveness and areas that could be improved, whether that's more rigorous training or encouraging ambassadors to step away from their kiosks to actively patrol the neighborhoods. Secondly, regarding item E1, concerning PR and marketing to improve the Rainbow District, I think stronger action should be taken to deal with proliferation of empty storefronts and vacant commercial lots awaiting development. Some of these have been empty for five years now. These empty storefronts and boarded or fenced-off lots negatively affect nearby businesses, decrease local foot traffic, and contribute to a city in decline atmosphere. I would suggest lots and storefronts empty longer than a year should have to contribute to a startup incubator program to help new diverse businesses launch in West Hollywood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it doesn't sound like we have anybody signed up for Zoom, despite the fact that I'm getting texts that they're waiting in Zoom. So we'll figure that out. But then we'll just, I think we're finished with public comment then, so we can move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city council members and community members. Thank you to those of you who spoke during public comment about safety issues. And it looks like they are going to talk with Acting Captain Fannie Lapkin and Danny Reavis, our community safety director in the back of the room. I do have a few announcements. The city, the city and the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce launched We Happy Wednesdays on April 2nd to help local venues and businesses thrive. This initiative provides free parking at all city parking meters, parking structures, and city-owned surface lots every Wednesday evening in April 2025 from 4:00 p.m. to midnight. For more details, please visit our website at go.weho.org/wehappy. Join the city at one or more in a series of community cleanup events this April and May. These events will provide an opportunity for community members to serve and beautify the West Hollywood neighborhoods with their friends and family. Supplies, water, and snacks will be provided for, to participants. For more information, visit our website or contact the community and legislative affairs team outside in the lobby. LADWP will be paving the intersection of La Cienega Boulevard and Santa Monica Boulevard next Monday night, April 14th, from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. on Tuesday. The city will share information about this, and LADWP will be sending out notices to residents and business owners to notify them of the work. Curbside message boards will also be used to provide updates. For the month of April, West Hollywood has launched a new website with resources to help, help you take climate-friendly steps, save money, and make our community stronger. You can also enter a raffle for, for prizes from the local certified green businesses that we saw earlier. For more information, visit my.weho-climateaction.org. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. We have a question.
Could we get an, I know Danny and Acting Captain Lapkin are in the back, but could we get an update on the camera installations along the thoroughfares? I believe we said March of this last year, and the real-time watch center, as well as the drone pilot program? I thought we were talking about March with it being done and ready, but if maybe at the end of the meeting or whenever, we could talk about that?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Then we can move on to the fiscal impact on consent calendar. And I just want to reiterate the items that have been moved to consent from our typical agenda. It was item F1, direction to paint bike lanes green. Item F3, the Clean California Community Designation. Item F4, amending the city council member list of pre-approved travel and organizations to attend. And then F5, a resolution opposing cuts to HIV prevention and treatment programs worldwide. And F6, recognizing April 2025 as Fair Housing Month. We have a motion in a second. Can we get the fiscal impact from the city clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, with the additions of agenda items F1, F3, F4, F5, and F6, the fiscal impact is $629,500 in expenditures, $0 in revenues, and $0 in wave fees.
Terrific. We have a motion in a second.
Let's see if we can make this work.
Fingers crossed. All right.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no public hearings and no legislative business, so we can move straight to item E1, the Rainbow District. And I believe as part of this discussion, we are incorporating item F2, the GoGo Dancer Appreciation Day as well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor and council, my name is Laura Byrie, your Director of Economic Development for the City of West Hollywood. I'm joined tonight for tonight's presentation regarding the Rainbow District, as well as the, we will also incorporate the GoGo Dancer Appreciation Discussion as part of your council discussion tonight. But I'm joined by my colleagues, our Business Development Manager, Paolo Kespertit, our Business Development Analyst, Laura Di Ambrosia, as well as many colleagues from our cross-departmental team that worked on this effort for the Rainbow District item over the last several months. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Paolo to give you that presentation tonight, and staff will be available to answer any questions. Paolo, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you. Good evening again. My name is Paolo Kespertit, Business Development Manager here for the City of West Hollywood. As you may recall, on June 2024, the council directed staff to designate the Rainbow District and perform community outreach with business owners in the Rainbow District to determine how the city can best support and encourage a thriving commercial district with LGBTQ+ nightlife establishments. In December 2024, the city council approved an economic study which outlined actions to support our local businesses. Tonight's item lists 12 recommendations for the council to consider. I'm not necessarily going to read all of these in length, but I'm going to summarize a lot of them. So items 1 through 4 talk about designating the Rainbow District, hiring a public relations firm, a social media marketing firm, and also producing Rainbow District-specific wraps. Items 5 through 8 are talking about placemaking with the designation of street pole banners, looking at producing Rainbow District-specific visitor guides, increasing the designated drop zones in the Rainbow District, as well as looking at an expansion program to the pickup trolley service to Thursday evenings. Recommendations 9 through 12 discuss extending operations of the five-story parking structure from closing at 2:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m., looking at a pilot program for city-sponsored special events, and amending the outdoor dining design guidelines for businesses on the south side of Santa Monica Boulevard, as well as a mural festival to activate commercial building facades and alleys with large-scale murals. So city staff conducted a variety of business engagement strategies and customer research related to this item. The key activities included conducting 14 one-on-one meetings with LGBTQ Rainbow District businesses, owners, and operators, hosting three focus groups, performing six operational site visits, conducting an intercept survey of 406 Rainbow District customers, and researching 12 comparable LGBTQ+ focus districts. Through the individual business meetings, focus groups, and site visits, five key themes emerged. Parking and transportation, specifically with the lack of parking availability, pickup and drop-off zones, and the cost of valet parking. Identity and branding, to focus on marketing businesses to solidify the district's LGBTQ+ identity, creating recognizable branding and placemaking strategies. Safety concerns, specifically with the nighttime safety and issues with individuals experiencing homelessness near business establishments, pedestrian activity and district activations with businesses citing low foot traffic and the need for just generally more events. And finally, regulatory concerns, specifically with the city's outdoor dining program, special event permitting process for accessory business uses, such as drag shows or trivia nights, and extended hours permit. And so the city took the feedback from the businesses and hired FM3, who has conducted a variety of city surveys in the past to conduct an in-person survey of customers within the Rainbow District. The survey took place from March 13th through the 21st at various times during the day. And the survey was available in English, Spanish, and Russian, and a total of 406 people participated. This in-person survey showed that there are strengths, challenges, and opportunities from the customer's perspective. Key strengths included that the Rainbow District's atmosphere and overall vibe, the walkability, the inclusiveness, the ability to bar hop, and also to meet new LGBTQ+ friends. Some challenges in the Rainbow District were that just generally less people are going out as a culture, that there are also other destinations, either LGBTQ or just other nightlife destinations, not enough parking, the cost of food and drinks, and also public safety. And some opportunities are looking to offer food and drink discounts, promo codes for discounted ride shares, street festivals, and concerts and movies in the park, improved safety, and expanding the pickup trolley service to Thursdays. The results of the survey are available in your report tonight, this evening, under Attachment C. And Richard Bernard is here from FM3. Should the council have any questions after the presentation tonight? And so as part of this item, staff was tasked with defining the Rainbow District. In conversations with various businesses in the proposed area, staff is recommending the Rainbow District consists of businesses who are generally on Santa Monica Boulevard between Dohini and La Cienega, as shown here on the map. This area is of important significance to the city as it's within the footprint of the WeHo Pride Street Fair, the WeHo Pride Parade, and also the Halloween Carnival, which brings in tens of thousands of people each year. And so the proposed programs and recommendations outlined in the staff report can be broken down into five key areas. So marketing and branding, which we're doing through programs, such as hiring public relations and social media firms, creating a visitor's guide, and placemaking initiatives, such as the rebranding of utility boxes, Big Belly trash boxes, and the designation of street pole banners. Through transportation, through the additional drop-off and pickup zones, piloting the expanded service of the pickup for Thursdays, and extending operations of the five-story parking structure from 2:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m. Also, activation events by piloting a city-sponsored event program. Regulatory adjustments by amending the outdoor dining eligibility and design guidelines for businesses on the south side of Santa Monica Boulevard, between San Vicente and Robertson. And public art through the creation of a mural festival to activate commercial building facades and alleys with large-scale murals. And again, I'm just going to breeze through these. These are the recommendations. There are 12 of them. It's also available in your staff report for this evening. And this concludes staff's presentations. I want to also echo Laura's comments that this item was a series of meetings and focus groups with also our internal staff members with various departments and divisions. And we want to also thank them for all their help as part of this as well. And we are available to answer any questions that the council may have.
A team effort, we love that. Thank you so much for the presentation. Do my colleagues want to begin with questions? I know we have a number of public commenters signed up to speak as well.
Time with the comments.
One question, and then we'll go on to public comment.
I know a lot of this, first, thank you very much for the very detailed report. This was, I believe, the mayor's and mine's item a year or so ago. So it's glad to see the thorough aspect of it. The issue with the south side of the street of Santa Monica Boulevard has been everyone's favorite topic up here, as we've sent you numerous emails about, about that, right? One of the recommendations in here includes the width of the access to the sidewalks from the out zones and how that could be regulated. I just want it to be clear, because I don't want to come back and do this again, that places, and I'll just name them, right? You know, like beaches, small beaches. What's the, what's the, beaches, regular?
Beaches Baja.
Beaches Baja, thank you, Laura. Always promoting our amazing business community. I always get, I call it big beaches and small beaches. And if Paul's still here, no, he's not. So there you go. Does this address the issue that we've been having with beaches Baja? Because I just want to make sure, as well as our amazing neighbors to the left, with Bottega Louis and some, I know that the south side of the street is treated a little differently than north. And as long as that's kind of settled up, that changes my conversation.
I'd like to invite up our Assistant City Manager, Jackie Roco, to join us here at the staff table, so she can address the question from Councilmember Erickson.
Good evening. Yeah, just briefly to answer your question, that is correct. What we're proposing here, as the changes to the existing outzone regulations, will address the concern that we've had with the fact that the tree wells on the south side are set back from the curb, unlike what is happening on the north side. So it will provide additional outdoor dining. So like what's there now will be able to stay in place, which they're still going through an application process, but we're guiding them through that. And they'll be able to have that. Under our old regulations, they would have had to remove almost everything that's there in its entirety. So they will get to have most of what's there now in accounting for an ADA-compliant path of travel and the difference in, you know, just the infrastructure in place.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions before we move on to public comment? Okay, go ahead, councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment that the level of customer service that's provided to that business is really high level. And that's the same level of customer service that's provided to all businesses within our city. So thank you very much for working with that business establishment in terms of getting everything on track for them. Thank you.
Okay, we're, did you have a question?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. So we're officially, the idea is to officially make this area a district, right? I mean, that becomes like an official thing. And I just wondered, have we had any community engagement regarding the name of the district and the expectations of the district? Community meaning surrounding residents, like the ones who came today who have concerns, public safety concerns, whatever?
There necessarily hasn't been any formal community engagement regarding the name. However, when we did the customer intercept survey with FM3, six in 10 people already knew what the Rainbow District was. So that's showing us that there is already brand recognition with the name Rainbow District within that area. I know that other people have called different names, but generally, six in 10 is a, is a good number for us to look at and probably promote further that that area will be named the Rainbow District.
Okay, so we're not planning to have any community engagement then with the neighborhood? The surrounding neighborhood or hoods?
Yeah, staff, staff is currently not recommend, recommending that. The item that came before, that came from the council was to call it. The item that came before, that came from the council was to call it the Rainbow District.
Okay, and is the plan for this to become a bid?
In conversations with the businesses along Santa Monica Boulevard, there was not a desire to create a formal business improvement district.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Erickson, you have a question?
Thank you. And just to clarify, I believe that we have all up here done items where we've unofficially called it the Rainbow District at some point in our policy, correct? Unofficial pride documents and other things that have been pushed through by the city. It's just been called the Rainbow District, as long as I've kind of been around.
Yes, so the city, as well as Visit West Hollywood, has been calling the area the Rainbow District for several years now. As you may be aware, and as was noted in the report of looking at other sample similar LGBTQ+ district. Boys Town as a label in Chicago, they were eventually sued for using that terminology. And so the city of West Hollywood has moved away from the terminology of Boys Town for the area and has embraced Rainbow District for the last several years. Thank you. We'll move on to public comment, and then we'll come back to council questions and deliberations. I see Wendy Goldman signed up for public comment first, followed by Michael Green, and then Jesse Harris.
Wendy Goldman, Cynthia Sunset Neighborhood Watch Block Captain, resident of West Hollywood. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and distinguished guests. Congratulations on an inspiring Women's History Month and supporting women's rights through programming that uplifts and educates us. I appreciate your support for the Sexual Healing Age Positive Sex Positive event on March 30th and hope to see it repeated in the future. Item E1 seeks to allocate over $400,000 for Santa Monica Boulevard. I never imagined that an agenda item would shock me like this. I've been a small business advocate for more than 25 years, watching numerous small businesses close and making Sunset Strip look like a boarded-up wasteland. As you know, there have been several restaurant closures during the past few weeks, creating more economic uncertainty for remaining ones. Legacy businesses that have survived for more than four decades are now shuttered. Yet you are promoting grants for Santa Monica Boulevard bars and businesses. The Business Improvement District on Sunset Strip has failed. Please take a closer look at the conditions there. There are no community gathering spaces, no public parks, only cement parkways and pedestrian impediments. High-rise office buildings, luxury hotels and restaurants, and private clubs do not offer residents the best kinds of places to socialize. Block-by-block security ambassadors only patrol the strip during the evening hours, leaving unhoused individuals at bus stops and in front of doorways. Why haven't they been patrolling all day when there are dozens of them stationed on Santa Monica Boulevard 24/7? I'm confused about the delays in completing so many approved structures and why council has not taken action to speed up completion in time for Pride Month. Millions are allocated, and I encourage you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Green. I think he has left the chambers. So we have Jesse Harris, followed by David Eckert. And if any other public commenters wish to submit a speaker slip, please do so. I think Jesse stepped out, yeah.
Mayor, Jesse would actually like to speak for the next item, so.
David Eckert, are you signed up for this item? Great, come on up.
Good evening, City Council. David Eckert, resident of West Hollywood. Just a couple notes regarding outdoor dining zones. I know TomTom and Beaches for months did not comply with the outzone. So I don't know why we're going back now, since they finally moved to the six-foot pedestrian safe walkway for ADA compliance. So I just, I don't understand why we're changing that once again. And also, I have always wondered why the Rainbow District isn't sort of designated all the way to La Cienega, sort of stops with the globe lights. So maybe we can take the globe lights and continue that. Just incorporate that better. And also regarding the globe lights, I know I'm sort of pester the city, but I really wish that they would work properly. So maybe in this respect, they can now work if we're going to highlight this zone. And last is just the drop zones in the area should really be looked at. They're always blocking the bike lanes and also blocking traffic. So if we could designate better drop zones for Ubers and all that, I think that would help the district. But I look forward to these changes. Thank you.
Thank you. I see a number of new speakers have signed up. We have Larry Block, followed by Todd Hallman, and then DJ Reimer. And then I believe we can go to Zoom after that.
Hi, everybody. Larry Block, West Hollywood. Thank you for this item. It's much needed. There is so much good in it, but it's a little short span. $65,000 for a social media consultant for like a year. I think we have made three-year plans with the Women's Freedom Festival. Can we make a longer commitment to the Rainbow District's survival? My shop is a key shop of pride in the city. We are on our 29th month of year-over-year declines in sales. I've invited Mr. Erickson to see our books. The books are open. 29 months in year-over-year declines. We're just trying to hit 2024 levels that are still 30% down from 2023 and 15% down from 2022. The streets are dead, and I don't see any recommendations here that really have to do with the main thing that I think is really hurting the business. And it's been mentioned by the speakers, it's the public safety initiatives. Can we trade the Thursday night pickup for an extra cop on the beat so that people feel safe on the streets when my employees leave at night? We have so much happening down there, from the pickpockets to the muggings to the stabbings. You see the residents in the neighborhood talking about how it's bleeding out into the neighborhoods. Public safety needs to be part of the recommendations. And honestly, city staff did a great job. They held so many meetings and so much outreach to try to gather the support on this. It's the first designate Boys Town, designate the Rainbow District, something that I brought forward in 2014 to try to gather this together and weave us all together into one cohesive group to support the whole business community. And I'm really glad to see it coming out now, and great things will happen of this because we need to do it, especially the promotion of the whole city is the social media. I try to do that all the time. Glad to have some help. Thanks.
Thank you. Todd Hallman, followed by DJ Reimer.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Todd Hallman, longtime West Hollywood resident, Public Safety Commissioner. But tonight, I am here speaking on behalf of The Wild, a bar in West Hollywood or nightclub where I do promotional events. This is a new endeavor for me, and I'm here on behalf of The Wild in support of GoGoDancer Appreciation Day. And as a former professional dancer, I know how hard it is to dance for these, for the crowd and to be up on the box for hours. But what most people don't really realize is the dancers bring energy. They bring excitement. They get the crowd engaged and moving. And once a month, with my co-partner, I produce the Last Disco. And I tell our dancers, I don't want you to go out and work for tips. I want you to get up on the box and dance and have a good time. Because when you have a good time, our crowd will have a good time. They will engage with you. There will be a back-and-forth rapport. That's what makes a great club experience. So it's very important that we recognize them, and The Wild is in support of this. Also, side note, I would like to thank Councilmember Erickson for directing me to City Manager David Wilson, Director of Community Safety Danny Rivas, and Director of Code Compliance Veto Adamidis. They did come out. They walked the east side with us. There have been some improvements made with the construction, so thank you very much. But going back to Dancer Appreciation Day, let's do this. It's important. They work hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is DJ Reimer, followed by Ron Cortez. Oh, DJ left. Okay, so we have Ron Cortez, followed by Kevin Berry, and then I believe we can go to Zoom.
Hello. So hi, my name's Ron Cortez. I'm a longtime resident of the city of West Hollywood. Thank you, Mayor Byers, Vice Mayor Heilman, council members Erickson, Meister and Hang, for this agenda item. I really think the proposed Rainbow District could be a really exciting and potentially fruitful designation for the city of West Hollywood. But I want to just suggest that, you know, in order to increase the likelihood of the success of the Rainbow District, that city council consider directing staff to seek input from the current LGBTQ+ commission, specifically in the form of allowing the commission to appoint one or more of its members to serve as a liaison to the Economic Development Department, solely for the purpose of advising or providing, just providing input on Rainbow District matters. Specifically, what would be helpful is some input on Recommendation Six, Visitor Guides and Points of Interest, Number 10 Pilot Program to Produce LGBTQ+ Special Events, and Number 12, the creation of a mural festival program that would benefit, well, yeah, mural program. Also, we're in a new time now. I moved to West Hollywood, a longtime resident, back when they converted the hillside next, just east of the Ramada, had West Hollywood in letters, you know, mimicking the Hollywood sign. That's how long I've been around. And it's always been a destination place, but times have changed. So we know now that as a longtime resident, that the LGBTQ+ community are going elsewhere. So we can provide input as to why are they going elsewhere. And so to address Councilmember Meister's earlier comment on community input, we can be that liaison. I'm sorry, the commission can be that liaison, not me. I'm just a resident. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ron. Our next speaker is Kevin Berry. And then if there's no other speakers in chambers, we'll move to Zoom.
Good evening, council. My name is Kevin Berry. I'm a resident of the east side of West Hollywood. And I just want to speak in support of this proposal. Growing up in Philadelphia, a city that has more murals than any other city in the nation, I have seen what that can do for tourism. So I really do love that. I do want to say, in response to what Mr. Block said, it doesn't have to be an either-or, public safety or tourism. That, the WeHo Pickup, I think is an amazing service that WeHo provides. I feel for, the more we can expand that, the better, especially for people on the east side. I'm someone who takes it religiously every week, not just for the bars, but also for accessing the pavilions. So I think that I support that. Working in communications, I do see the impact that the social media can have. So just please consider that it does not have to be an either-or proposition. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there are no other speakers in chambers tonight, we can move to Zoom.
Thank you. Genevieve, you may press star six to begin speaking.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Genevieve Morrell, President and CEO of the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. Echo Wendy Goldman's comments about the Sunset Strip, but I wouldn't blame the bid. Bids are funded by businesses, and the businesses are suffering right now. Bids can only be marketing enhancements with programs and events, and marketing is not enough. We need cities to step in. We need support for gateway signage and urban design and lighting and murals and all of the things that can be loosened up in terms of code and permits, et cetera, to help the businesses thrive and be more flexible. And this is what city staff is proposing for the Rainbow District. All businesses are hurting right now. Our small businesses are suffering all over the city. But we tried, I don't know if the city remembers, I'm sure the city remembers, that we tried for almost three years to create a bid in that Rainbow District back, I think it was 2010 or 2011. And no businesses are going to pay a mandatory fee right now in this economy. So we need the city to step in. This plan is a start. But as Scott Schmidt said in a letter that he submitted, it's not enough. We need to work on legislation. We need to work on a lot of things that are going to help expand uses for the businesses on the strip, including additional hours of operation that don't require security guards. GoGoDancers are entertainers. This is what they do, and they're performers. And they may be making a date, a career out of it, or just getting some extra pay. But they should be making their art into a business, as the chamber is supporting right now, and we feel that they should be appreciated. They bring energy, as Todd said, and they bring in a lot of business for our venues. And so we do think that this event, if marketed properly, could be a big signature event each year with the Rainbow District as other events as well that we could promote within the district. Let's start here and see what we can do. I think it's a good plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our public comment period for this item. We can move back to council member questions, comments, deliberations. Is there anybody who would like to begin the discussion tonight? Oh, Vice Mayor Heilman, all right.
I have lots of comments. First of all, thank you to everyone who spoke, and thank you to our staff for bringing this item forward. And I know that a lot of input from our businesses was solicited and obtained. And there's a lot of this that I think is really wonderful and will be great. And I have some additional comments and concerns. Let me start with a few of the concerns. And a number of speakers raised this issue of public safety, vacancies, homelessness on the street. So I don't see anything, and I know it's not your department, to deal with public safety and homelessness. But I'll give you an experience I had the other day, just walking down Santa Monica from La Cienega to Dohini. I walk there regularly. There were at least four homeless people along the sidewalk on the north side of Santa Monica, some who have been there regularly for a long time. When I got down by Bottega Louis and the Motherlode, there were four or five homeless individuals on the private property of the Motherlode. It wasn't open at that time. There were also homeless people over across the street by the Starbucks, as well as people by the bus stop in front of pavilions. And this is what I think our residents are concerned about, and I think it is what our businesses are concerned about. And I think it's, frankly, it deters people. I was actually walking by a group of tourists, and I felt embarrassed that this is what they were seeing on Santa Monica Boulevard. So if we're going forward with this, which I hope we will, we also have to simultaneously be addressing that and addressing it in a different way than we're addressing it now. Because what we're doing right now is not working. It works for some, but when you see the same people over and over and over again who are refusing services, and we don't have another approach to dealing with them, then we have to change our approach. So that's one concern. The concern about public safety-related issues and pickpocketing, I think that's a very legitimate concern. So if we're moving forward with this, we also have to simultaneously increase public safety resources in this Rainbow District. Doesn't make any sense to bring people here and then have them feel like they're unsafe or victimized. And we've seen this in other areas of LA. Westwood was once a very thriving nightlife. That all went away once there were a number of high-profile crimes. So those are two big concerns I have, and I think we need as a council to address that and move forward along with those changes. Two other things that I think are in your purview, and that is the stalled development projects. So I think Mr. Green mentioned this in his comments, that we have a number of development projects that are projects that are, they're detracting from our area. And that really makes the area look bad, plus the vacancies. And we need a strategy on dealing with those vacancies, particularly from La Cienega to Huntley. There are a number of high-profile locations that are currently vacant, and there's just no energy there. So I think that needs to be addressed as well. Sort of another related concern, and I appreciate Genevieve's comments that it is not the time for the business community to have an assessment, and that's why they don't want to bid. But I actually don't see what the business community is contributing here to this initiative, and that concerns me. I think we need to make sure, our businesses are great, and they run their businesses well, I'm not faulting them, but they need to step up a little bit on this as well. Not necessarily financially, but why aren't they taking responsibility for initiating special events like Mardi Gras? That was a business-initiated event, the Go-Go Appreciation Day. I think that's a perfect thing where those businesses should be taking on that responsibility. And so, and that would, I think, help the businesses take ownership in a way that I don't see they're doing here. I don't want this to just be, city does all these things, and the business community is not also partnering with us in doing those things. I do have some suggestions. For instance, the businesses could be jointly marketing. Instead of each of them having their own ads, they could be contributing to an ad that promotes all of the businesses in the district. Some of the criticisms about special events, I think those are valid. Why a existing business needs a special event permit to have a trivia night, that just seems really silly, and I don't know if that's the case, but we need to eliminate those kind of barriers on our part. One other suggestion that I have, and I think it's something we're missing. In the old days, we had Studio One, which would have, a lot of well-known performers would come there, the Rose Tattoo as well, and that brought a different type of vibe. It wasn't just everyone went to the bars and drank and danced, but there were performers. You know, and I love drag, but not everyone, that's not for everyone. The businesses talked about maybe having singer-songwriter nights, or featuring some other LGBT talent at their establishments. So those are some suggestions that I had. I think maybe what, if we move forward, which I hope we will, it would be a good idea to have a steering committee with the business community and taking some leadership, even if there's no formal bid, maybe even an advisory group that works with you and works with staff on an ongoing basis. The one thing about this that I'm not a big fan of is the painting the utility boxes. I just don't think that really drives traffic. I think the murals could, but I don't know that painting the utility boxes, I worry that we'll go back to what we did on Sunset with the polka dots on the sidewalk. So that's my one hesitation here. Those are my comments, and I look forward to what my colleagues have to say.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Erickson.
Sure. Well, Vice Mayor Heilman, I only go places where the boxes are painted for the streets. So I think we're in sublime disagreement there. No, I want to thank staff for doing this item. This came about, I believe, Councilmember Hang and I talked about it before he was elected, as well as former Councilmember Mayor Shine. And the mayor and I really wanted to push this forward through a lot of outreach that we've been hearing from and with the business community. I want to thank the members of the public who have spoken to this. I think what Mr. Block said in regarding to a longer-term social media contract is helpful, trends, viral TikToks, which the Comms Department does very well these days. Kudos to you all. Maybe even getting the WeHo Library TikTok team involved might be helpful because they go very viral. A longer-term strategy might be helpful there to develop what could be happening, not just within six months, but a year, two years. I think that's a really good point, and that also helps, because I know a lot of businesses utilize their own social media and have their own followings, of course, and we want to continue that, but then how do we just add on? So maybe a longer-term strategy for that, but I thought that was a good comment. Additionally, I support this item. I really think that what we've got here is something that I think can push us forward. I concur with what Vice Mayor Heilman was saying, is that it would be great to have some sort of ad hoc steering committee where a member of the council or a member of the LGBTQ+ Commission could be there in some way, not as a Brown Act body. I know the city clerk is not here, but I know she would, her eye would twitch if we added another Brown Act body to this. But making sure that we are doing all that we can to involve stakeholders, like our LGBTQ Commission, as well as the council, so we can move that forward. Maybe it's always the mayor, sorry, or the vice mayor in one way, shape, or form, but I'll leave that up to whatever you want to do. I support items, I'm just going to go through the recommendations real quick, because I think that would maybe help with some, because there's a lot solidarity with what we're trying to find here, so I'm going to start at the end. I support the Cultural Affairs Commission, the Mural Festival Program. I think that is incredible, and how we can promote that local art. The outdoor dining, public right-of-way eligibility, thank you, Jackie, for providing that clarity. This has been a major sticking point for a lot of us, and I believe Mr. Eckert said that. And, you know, I know we disagree a little bit on this, but I think the point is, is what we want to do is we want to get that application for permanency with these outdoor dining zones. So that way, it's not just a wooden structure there. It's permanent, it's ADA compliant, it's more stable and there, you know, in a different way than the out zones during the pandemic. So I really think this will help several of those businesses, and I've been in touch with them, and they seem to be happy about this. So I'm glad for that. Additionally, I love a movie screening series, live concert series. Good thing we have an item called WeHo Pride Next, and we have JJLA always ready to help out. That's just, Jeff just gave me a glaring look, but, you know, but Making Share and Cleo just gave me a look too. No, and a good look. But I think the way that we can continue to promote activity in these areas is super special, and however we can use the PDC. Additionally, if we could look at, I think this public comment was really important, I know Jackie and I have spoken about this, but the drop zones, how those can be better utilized. Ubers, lifts are just kind of willy-nilly sending people everywhere, and we were one of the first cities to implement this. When it happened, it was successful, but then things just kind of went by the wayside a little bit. And so however we could streamline that more, I know Uber and Lyft are really utilizing that in a different way now, and Waymo, and whatever, whatever carless or driverless, probably carless soon, but driverless ways that we can do. And then my last comment, I agree with all the other recommended items I was trying to find. Where are my notes? Sorry, Madam Mayor. Where was it? Okay, number 12, regarding the murals. It would be great if we could do some type of outreach to young queer or trans-related artists from nationwide who still work or look to West Hollywood as that beacon of hope. I was out a couple of weeks ago, and I ran into an individual who was at 33 Taps, and I, you know, started talking to them, because I'm from the Midwest, so I just talk to people randomly. But, and they said that they extended their stay one more day because they didn't want to go back to Florida. And it just, like, shook me in such a different way. And they were like, I don't, like, I love my state, but my state doesn't love me, and being here this last weekend has, like, truly changed me. And it was just like, it was really gut-wrenching, because that is sadly where parts of our country are at. But if we could continue to shine that beacon out there and maybe promote with our amazing arts department, murals from children, murals from high school groups, murals from advocacy groups that have all of their funding cut from their states, or they're not allowed to say the word gay, or lesbian, or trans, or queer, I think that would be a great way in which we can continue that outward expression. So those are all my comments, and I'm looking forward to next steps.
Thank you. Councilmember Hang.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say thank you to Laura and the entire team, and to the Assistant City Manager for, again, working with Baja Beaches, for getting them a pathway to get onto the right page. I think it's the city extending its handout to work with a local small business to help it be successful, because that's what this, that's what this city is. We want to help all of our small businesses be successful. So thank you for continuing out for the high level of customer service that you do. I want to thank staff for this item. I was actually out on a Friday night with former Mayor John D'Amico. I happened to run into Laura and Paolo walking to each of the bars, and they were also timing when the trolleys, when the pickup trolley would stop and pick up people. And they were counting people, and they were going into the establishments, meeting with the bar owners. So I saw them in the wild, actually, doing research for this. So thank you so much for the work that you do. So I am in support of this item. Like the vice mayor, I'm not in favor of the raps. I'm just, doesn't do it for me. And also, along with what the vice mayor had stated earlier, I was actually talking with a general manager, one of the general managers at the Abbey, and she had mentioned wanting to work with other bars and restaurants in the district to, and she just threw this out there, I think we bars should all talk to each other and say, okay, on Wednesday, we're going to have a $5 taco night, and then all the bars will have $5 tacos, so that all the bars are taking some sort of ownership in terms of what they can market for themselves. So when the vice mayor had just mentioned that earlier, I thought, actually, this is just what was discussed on Sunday briefly. So I think that's a great idea, if that's something they're willing to do. But other than that, I think the item is great, and piggybacking off of what Councilmember Erickson said and what Mr. Block said, I think it's a great idea if we increase the social media budget, maybe if we do a pilot program, starting, and then gauging how successful it is. I mean, we reinvest more into the social media, along with Visit West Hollywood, or however else, to get, to drive more traffic, foot traffic into our establishments here, so that way we continue to make it successful. So I want to thank you for all the hard work that you do, and it was amazing seeing our staff in the wild. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Meister.
Yeah, thank you so much. So I'm, you know, very supportive of the program, but I agree about a lot of the things that have been brought up, such as, you know, until we figure out how to fill some of these vacant spaces, that synergy is not going to be there. It's just like when they closed, you know, when Robertson was closed, and you have half of the street is just a vacant lot. There's nothing to see. So if you don't have anything to see, I don't think that banners and wraparounds, I don't think they'll take away from anything, but they're not, they're not going to be the things that attract people to the, to the district. It's going to be the actual businesses, and having less vacant spaces is, you know, is really what's necessary. And that also is connected to public safety, and eyes on the street, and the homelessness. And so all of those things agree that public safety resources for that area have to be increased. I don't know that, that the, having more of the blue, the blue guys, the block-by-block are going to, are really the answer. I think, I think we need more sheriffs, or we need that in-between officer that we've been talking about. I think it just needs to have a stronger presence. I also agree that the drop zones are an issue. They have been, people will just, they'll just stop at Robertson and Santa Monica and hold up traffic, and no one can make a right turn because you have to get into that right-turn lane, and it's just the, the traffic circulation there is kind of a mess. And I, and I, I'm sorry, I have to say it about, to complain about parking when we had additional spaces allocated from the, from the Robertson Lane project, that previous council just gave up 100 spaces just because, that doesn't, we see now, well, that was, that was short-sighted, because we need those spaces. And as the arc gets busier and busier, and we have more and more programming, there's going to be less and less available parking spaces from a public parking point of view. I agree with Commissioner Ron Cortez that the LGBTQ+ Commission should have some involvement in this, especially when it comes to the discussion about points, you know, what, what's to see, and how to, you know, how do you have a good time at, in the Rainbow District. I also am very concerned about the, the amounts that are being allocated. I don't think that $30,000 gets very far. And I think that we, we have to increase the budget, whether it's an overall increase, and then we'll see how things fall. But I, things, we know that little things cost $20,000. I mean, this is supposed to be a year-long program to help promote a whole district, and I just don't see that happening. I also have a concern about this being given to Visit West Hollywood rather than a, an LGBTQ+ agency that's focused on LGBTQ. I, you know, I just remember the, I mean, they did a great job with Sunset with the, with the advertising, but it was like all straight people, you know? It didn't, you know, it, it was definitely focused in a way that didn't really represent our city entirely. And I also have a concern about, you know, the We Love WeHo promotion. We had, you know, we didn't really see how that, how that turned out. We don't know what the results are. Did it actually increase business in the city? And if it didn't, then I don't want to give this away for something that's an unknown. And I think that we really need to look at, you know, people in promotion and, and in putting together these types of things that, again, have that LGBTQ+ experience, and have, and have a success, a success rate that's very obvious, right? So I, I mean, I would say that we increase the budget in order to do that, if we have to. But that's, that's just my, my feeling about that. And then, just trying to see what else. I suggested that we have Go-Go dancers that are security guards, but that, that might not go over very well. I do think that, that we should do this thinking that in a few years, that the area will be able to create a business improvement district. You know, for years, all we've gotten is, you know, the Christmas lights, right, or the holiday lights, that, that has been the, the big assessment, and that, and that hasn't been very creative. So obviously, there needs to be more, more money involved and more creativity involved. But I think that if, if we put this investment into the area, then, then we should, we should expect something come out of it. And whether it's, you know, you know, more creativity with the businesses working together, but with that thought, that, that there needs to be a cohesive, a cohesive group moving forward, and, and not, and not think just short term, but think about this in the long term. And so that's pretty much all I have. I mean, I don't know that I agree with, you know, changing the streets to, you know, have less space for pedestrians on that side of the street. I mean, you know, you rent a storefront, you know what space you have. And then it's not like they're paying as much as the people on the, on the south side, no, on the north side of the street for the, for the, for the lease, right? The lease is based on square footage. So I don't really have a feeling about that. I think that, you know, the space is the space, and we, we built larger sidewalks for pedestrian activity. So I do have a concern about, about shrinking that. I understand the trees are in the way, but that's because we have infrastructure underground that won't allow us to move trees closer to the street. At least, that's what I've been told. So I think that's pretty much it. I, I think that, you know, again, the public safety aspect is super important if you want to have people coming out at night, and, and even just coming, you know, residents coming out of their homes to go out at night. That really needs, really needs to be considered. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
May I just share, for as an update for the council? We will be bringing back an update on "WeHo Loves Locals" on May 5th. There will be some stats in that report, as well as some return on your investment, as well as the incorporation of the next steps for the item that Mayor Byers had brought forward regarding the gift card program. So, you'll be seeing update coming on May 5th. Additionally, with regard to the holiday lighting, or winter-themed lighting, as we like to call it these days, along Santa Monica Boulevard, that's funded by a property-based business improvement district, and the property owners pay that as part of their tax rolls. And I can share with you that we did an RFP for that as well. And so, you'll be seeing new designs coming to you at your June 9th council meeting in the future. So, the team you see here will be here frequently.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. This is really exciting. We had the economic study just a few weeks, months ago, and we knew that there were going to be several actions taken across the city in terms of helping boost support for our businesses, and therefore, the entire community. So, I think the Rainbow District makes a lot of sense as a starting place for some of this work and this long-term investment and discussions that we're having. It is, after all, one of the premier spaces of West Hollywood, something that makes us so unique as a community, as so many different aspects of our community do. But, in hearing that the LGBTQ community is not looking to the Rainbow District in the same ways it once was, that other places are popping up in popularity, as Commissioner Cortez reminded us, it is really important that we make the Rainbow District the place to be. And that economic study gave us a number of solutions and ideas and tools I see incorporated here in really thoughtful ways. The placemaking items itself, defining this district, making it big and clear what we're all about here, that itself is a promotional tool. So, those wraps, while it feels like something small, I've seen them in every city, and I have dozens of examples of wraps on utility boxes and trashcans from across the country, because they've shown me what that district or that area of the community is all about. There's maps, there's stories, there's artwork, there's poetry, and I think there's really creative ways that we can express the values of our community by just utilizing underutilized space that exists all around us. So, I think that, as part of the placemaking component of this effort, is, is really extraordinary. I'm thrilled about the murals. I know that's something we've talked about so often. How do we get more murals and more artists to have their artwork across the community? And I think the idea of a festival, I know I've seen those done in so many different ways, whether it's one day, one weekend, a week, something that actually creates an opportunity for people to come out and experience the art being created, and then get to be a part of that storytelling. It's, it's a really cool thing, and I know our design district is looking to expand their arts walk in the coming years, so maybe there's some collaboration that you're thinking of there. But either way, I think, as Councilmember Erickson said, the opportunity to highlight artists through this opportunity is tremendous, and therefore, a reflection of our values and our investment in this area. I'm thrilled about the expansion of the trolley. I know we've heard about that need so often. It's often what supplements the need for parking, is people having access, and it helps our own community members get to and from safely. So, when we think about safety, I'm glad to see the trolley as part of that component, and hopeful that, you know, after a one-year pilot, we may be looking at further expansions too. That Thursday night's a big deal. I know "Are We Happy Parking Program" is about seeing what Wednesday nights have to offer in this community, so who knows? But getting it going and expanding it this coming year will be a really exciting opportunity. I wanted to just make note, I think the opportunity for us to be cosponsoring more events is extremely valuable, but I do not want to underemphasize the value of the events that we are already offering, and there are so many events that we're already offering between the Community Legislative Affairs Department, the Recreation Department, our arts programming. And I know that we've all struggled from the lack of a consolidated calendar, and I say struggle, like, I didn't know there was 10 events that Saturday I just committed to, but it's been our experience often in this community. So, I think the ability to create some sort of central citywide events calendar, and then get that in front of the businesses, is another opportunity for them, without having to create anything else for them. I just heard this weekend, at one of the Rainbow District establishments, that if there was only a spring carnival, they would love to do some sort of spring-themed deals. And I was so excited to tell them about the April 26 Spring Expo, and then the Recreation Fair happening on May 3rd, the following weekend. It was an aha moment, but just sort of that lack of information or that information gap people fall through. So, I think in addition to communicating this expanded opportunity for more events will be amazing, that foot traffic is something that I think we can be so responsible for, not just raising what our residents are involved in, but the broader region. So, events are a huge component of that. I know that the public safety component of the Rainbow District challenges has come up a few times, and when I think about that safety component, I think about some of the work that we've long invested in, in terms of training the nightlife personnel, and I know that's something we continue to do. We had, just a couple of weeks ago, somebody talk about the dress code component of that experience and that hostility at the bars. So, if we're thinking about safety, I would love to make sure that that training's not only happening, as I know it is, but expanded to consider, to continue to cover some issues, drink spiking, the date raping components that happen in the Rainbow District, the dress code, all of those things that we're already doing, we just have to keep doing and do better. And then, I think this also offers an opportunity for something I've heard raised a number of times, be it from LGBTQ Commission or other spaces, about the communications and coordination between security at bars. And because you've been connecting with and holding court with so many folks around these discussions, I think there's an opportunity to think differently about what that looks like. And as we're inviting more people and really embracing this opportunity to come to West Hollywood, to communicate that we're doing safety in a new and different way, as we've all expressed, I think is valuable. So, I just can't express enough how excited I am about all of these different initiatives, because I also know that this is a roadmap for us to follow in other parts of the community. And there is certainly more work, as folks have expressed desire to see more efforts on Sunset, on the east side, and it's coming. I think we're really hungry and eager to make sure that this sort of energy is spread across the community, and we know it all starts here in West Hollywood. So, I see Vice Mayor Heilman has signed himself back up to speak, and if anybody else has questions or comments?
Well, it sounds like there's a lot of support for this item, and so, what I'm hearing is that we want to move forward with this, and I'll, I'll make a motion at some point, but we want to move forward this. We, we've made some comments about special events, and maybe having the business community take some of the lead on some of those, maybe identifying coordinated activities like Taco Night, maybe we need to engage them more with our existing special events, so that they're aware of the things the city is doing, maybe coordinated promotion by the business community, maybe the idea of having some kind of advisory group that works with our staff as we move forward during this year. I heard some concerns about the promotion and whether using Visit West Hollywood as the appropriate entity to do that. They do a lot with, I, I do know they do a lot with LGBTQ travel, and they have a great deal of expertise there. But maybe we should ask them to do a presentation to us of what it is that they would do with this money, or at least ask our staff to get an update on that. I heard some concerns about maybe expanding the period of time for the social media campaign, maybe extending it beyond a one-year period, extending it to two years, perhaps longer if it works. And then, I also heard the concerns about having our staff come back to us and address what, what we're going to do about the vacancies, the homeless issue in the district, and some of the stalled developments. So, my motion would be to approve the recommendations that staff presented to us, ask our staff to work with the business community to maybe take the lead on special events, including the Go-Go Appreciation Day, and ask our staff to come back with recommendations on how we're going to address public safety, homelessness, vacancies, and stalled developments in the district, and ask for a presentation on how Visit WeHo will do the marketing for this, as well as authorizing a longer contract for the social media. So, that's my motion. Oh, and David is-
Can I just make a couple of comments?
Yes.
So, we are going to have conversations about homelessness, and as you all know, it's a regional issue. It's hard to just define it in one area or address it in one area of the city. So, we'll, so the answer is yes, we'll do that, but I think it'll be a different conversation. We'll, on June 9th, we'll have a focus on the homelessness issues and addressing homelessness as part of the council meeting, and based on the direction that we get from the subcommittee later this week. Similar with public safety, as part of the budget discussions, we can certainly have the focus on the trainings that we're doing, that the mayor talked about, but as we look at public safety deployment and officers, that would be part of the larger budget discussion that we, that we'll have coming up. And then, just lastly, the numbers that you're seeing here, just to give you an estimate of the sense of cost, you're not approving a budget tonight, you're approving these programs and things to happen. So, don't think that these numbers are stuck, it's stuck to these numbers, that things cost more and need to adjust, we'll come back if we need more money, but right now, you're not approving any budget amount.
Or if you need less.
Yeah, exactly. You're not approving the budget for this item, just the activities.
Yeah, and David, I, I agree with you on homelessness being a regional and, and citywide issue. We have a current policy, maybe we experiment with a new policy for this district and, and try it out and see if it works differently than how it's been working currently.
Can we, can we add something to your motion?
Well, sure.
Just to have, also, for there to be engagement with the LGBTQ+ Commission.
Yeah, I have no opposition to that. I, I don't think that is their primary purview, but certainly getting their input and maybe member is a representative to the advisory committee. Yeah.
There, can I, it looks like a lot of this is sort of one-year time-bound, so my assumption was that there'd be something returned before that one-year timeline with an update. It would be my preference to, at that time, look at expanding those services around the social, and, and it's also my understanding that we're hiring a social media marketing firm to work with Visit West Hollywood. They're not the ones solely doing the marketing themselves, although I do think a presentation from them, maybe about both the WeHo Locals program and their intentions for this work, could be valuable at the future date. But I think if we could have something come back at the year mark with updates, or before the year mark with updates about all of this, that would help us decide what the next steps look like.
Certainly, that's correct.
And I'm fine with that. I wasn't saying we necessarily have to extend it to two years, but maybe think, having that in the back of your mind as a possible extension.
Thank you. Councilmember Hang?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick thought, if there are any, you know, professional social media marketing firms that are actually West Hollywood-based, it would be a good opportunity for us to invest in a small business here that actually knows the community, so I think that might be helpful, if there are any that are in existence. Just a suggestion. Thank you.
Councilmember Erickson?
Okay, I'm gonna throw a left, whatever, I don't play baseball. So, insert baseball reference. So, I know this bill has been controversial for some of us, and it's okay, but the 4:00 AM bill is back in the state legislature, but it's declaring entertainment zone, I'm gonna butcher the language, but it's intending entertainment zone. So, essentially, if it passes, the city would come back and declare a zone kind of like this already as that, and then we would update the code to be 4:00 AM. I know it hasn't been agendized, and if Lauren Langer was here right now, she said, "It's not on the agenda," so we can't talk about it, but we have another city attorney here, who's great. Norma, thank you, I have your card. Sorry, Norma, I had to grab it for a second. I was gonna call you Nora for a second, and then I was like, no.
We're not taking action on that.
We're not taking action on that, but I know I've discussed this item. That's why I grabbed her, I literally almost called you Nora, and I was like, that's not right. But I wanted to make sure that we, and maybe Hernan and the team who already are tracking this, can bring that back for the council to take that up, because we would want to, my personal opinion is I would like us to be on record as supporting that bill, because the quicker we can get this done, the easier I think it would be as this moves forward. And I, I'm not a betting man, but I think it's finally gonna pass, and so I kind of want to move that forward for our businesses. So, maybe on a future agenda, we could have a legislative item to discuss that. But we're not taking action, Norma, tonight.
While you're not taking action, I can say that that has been discussed with staff, and we are continuing to monitor that particular bill.
Great.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or friendly amendments to the motion on the table? And is staff clear on the motion on the table, or do we need to reiterate anything for the purpose of the record?
We, we are clear on the motion on the table. Additionally, we will share that. We will meet with Visit West Hollywood, and as you had stated, Mayor, it was not to contract and have them be the person, they would contract out with a particular social media and PR firm to do that work, but we will communicate that back to them and for the May 5th presentation, incorporate that.
And the wraps are a part of the motion? I just need to make sure. Okay.
Yes, yes. As much as I feel like they're not really-
We're gonna approve you, Ron.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've got a motion in a second, and if that system's working, we can take our vote. Awesome.
And then, Mayor, also, there was, I don't know if there was more discussion about the Go-Go Dancer appreciation item from the council?
It was included with the idea that we would ask the business community to take the lead on that.
That's how I understood it as well. And is that, is Councilmember Hang, that was your understanding too, as the original initiator of the item?
So, there would be no staff involvement, or?
We can, we can cosponsor it, but I think it's probably best for them to, since they have the, the people and the personnel, and they know who all of the dancers are, for them to be the lead in promoting it. Yeah, I, you know, I'm thinking it would be like any other event that the business community or the chamber were to sponsor, we would be a cosponsor of it, and, but they would primarily be doing the promotion.
Understood. I actually am in agreement with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Terrific. All right.
Mayor, if we could have Councilmember Hang put in his vote. Please.
Great, thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you all so much for the, terrific. Do you need a break? Does anyone need a break?
Okay.
We good?
I'm, I'm good.
We're good. All right, we'll move on to item E2, the Agreement for Services with KOA for the Beverly Boulevard Protected Bike Lanes feasibility study. Allow staff a moment to swap out seats here. And if you're intending to speak on the public comment, now's a good time to get that speaker slip filled out and signed, or turned in. Stalling, stalling. Great.
Good evening, Mayor Byers, Vice Mayor Heilman, Councilmembers Nick Marisic, Director of Community Development. I'm joined this evening by our Assistant Director of Community Development, Jennifer Alkire, and Paige Portwood, who I want to thank and acknowledge, who's been stepping in as our senior, acting senior transportation planner since the retirement of Bob Chung late last year, and will be giving the presentation on this item. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, and members of the public. My name is Paige Portwood, Associate Planner in the Long Range Planning Division. The item before you this evening is an agreement for professional services with KOA Corporation to commence a Beverly Boulevard Protected Bike Lanes feasibility study. We do have a fairly brief presentation this evening, which will be about five minutes. On December 18th, 2023, the City Council approved an item that directed staff to provide the City Council with recommendations on the process to amend the Design District Streetscape Master Plan to include protected bike facilities on Beverly Boulevard, unless there is no room. The council also directed staff to report back with a timeline of events, community meetings and hearings to be scheduled, details on specific resources needed to complete the task, and if possible, estimated cost for the process. As such, this item recommends that the City Council approve an agreement for professional services with KOA to perform the Beverly Boulevard Protected Bike Lanes feasibility study, and to authorize the city manager or designee to execute documents incident to the agreement. Adopted in 2013, the Design District Streetscape Master Plan, or Master Plan, lays out a framework for improvements for the public right-of-way on Melrose Avenue, Robertson Boulevard, Beverly Boulevard, Almont, and LaPierre. The Master Plan was designed to improve the overall aesthetics and mobility of the commercial district, known as West Hollywood Design District. The goal of the Master Plan is to strengthen the economic vitality of the district by improving the pedestrian environment, adding bicycle infrastructure, public gathering spaces, and landscaping, while also improving the overall aesthetic- while also improving the overall aesthetics and utility of the streets. Prior to the Master Plan adoption in 2013, staff made immense efforts in public outreach to reach a vision for each corridor independently, as well as a comprehensive vision for the entire district. Each corridor included an avenue working group, which acted similarly to a steering committee. The Beverly Boulevard Avenue Working Group's vision encompassed a few components, such as a sleek and modern design that is fitting for a shopping boulevard with high design products. They desired beautifully landscaped public spaces, such as landscaped medians and street trees to provide consistent canopies. There was also a focus on street safety improvements and upgraded street furnishings, such as enhanced sidewalk paving, crosswalks and bike lanes, as well as new street furniture. Approval of the contract authorizes staff and KOA to begin assessing the feasibility of protected bike facilities along Beverly Boulevard. Staff anticipates the entire feasibility study process to be completed by June 2026, in which necessary analysis and outreach will take place during this time. Staff alongside the contractors will conduct outreach efforts, such as community workshops, tabling events, business outreach and presentations to necessary commissions, such as the Transportation and Mobility Commission and the Public Facilities Recreation and Infrastructure Commission. Outreach will occur during the alternative development phase and once a draft concept plan is prepared prior to presenting to the City Council. Within the alternative development phase and alternative feasibility analysis, KOA will be assessing and receiving feedback from the public on the variety of decisions that play into the design of protected bike lane facilities, while also considering the existing vision set by the Design District Streetscape Master Plan. Seen here are a few example treatments, barriers and other features that may be explored. Staff recommends approving this contract with KOA to allow input and analysis on protected bike lane facilities for several reasons. First, as mentioned in the previous slide, there are many options regarding the type of protected bike facilities and associate design elements that might be most appropriate for Beverly Boulevards, such as being constructed at street or sidewalk level, the types of barriers to install and various intersection treatments, all of which have various impacts and benefits. This analysis for this corridor is particularly important due to the existing Streetscape Master Plan that incorporates other street amenities and landscaping elements to consider. The project also triggers a complete reconstruction of the street and public right-of-way, meaning that any reconfiguration to allocate additional space for the protected bike lanes need to be designed and prepared in a way that Public Works can then intake the plans and establish a formal corridor-wide civil engineering and landscape architectural drawings. We wanted to provide a brief overview of the process that staff takes for the planning and engineering projects that are undergoing underway in the city. Generally, long-range planning, mobility staff develops and launches studies and plans for the projects and designs. For this project specifically, that is what this contract would initiate. Long-range planning oversees the phases of community engagement and conceptual designs, and the projects are moved to Public Works for final engineering documents and construction. This concludes our presentation. We're available for any questions.
Thank you. Do we want to start with questions? Or should we go to public comment first and then come back to questions?
I had one question. The approved master plan as it stands now does have a bike lane, correct? It's just not a protected bike lane.
Correct.
And how long a stretch of Beverly Boulevard are we talking about in the city of West Hollywood?
That is a great question. Throughout the corridor of Beverly Boulevard.
It's basically from kind of Robertson to Doheny, I think.
Just east of Robertson to Doheny. And we got the map pulled up there for you. So it is a relatively short segment of street.
Okay. And then it obviously connects to the city of LA and then connects to Beverly Hills on the west. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's take public comment, and then we'll come back to council questions and deliberations. First, signed up for public comment, I have Jordan Beard, followed by Jesse Budlong. Budlong, am I saying that wrong? We'll figure it out. And then Andrew Solomon after that.
Hi, Council. I'm in support of the protected bike infrastructure on Beverly Boulevard. It's adjacent to Cedar Sinai, so these bike lanes will encourage some of the thousands of workers that commute there every day to travel by bicycle rather than by car. These bike lanes will also provide a connection to the planned protected bike lanes that the city of LA is planning to construct along San Vicente. It's exciting to see us moving closer to installing protected bike lanes here, which would be a huge improvement over the existing Class II bike lanes that exist in other parts of the city. Protected bike lanes encourage people of all ages and abilities to bike. Instead of another feasibility study, I would have liked to see the city actually spend this money on the design of the project, as well as improving resources and staffing for our planning department to complete the many council-directed mobility projects around the city. If a feasibility study is required to advance this project, then it has my full support, but not at the expense of deprioritizing existing mobility projects like Fountain Avenue. Thank you.
Jesse, Jess. We're gonna figure this out.
Hello, Council. My name is Jesse Budlong. I'm a West Hollywood resident. I am a transportation planner, and I'm a multimoto activist. I biked a lot in West Hollywood. I have been hit by multiple cars, both as a pedestrian and as a bicyclist, and I am all for protected bike lanes. About this about this contract, though, spending about $330,000 to study the feasibility of protected bike lanes on about 0.65 miles of road seems a little high. When you factor in the design and the construction costs, this could easily cost over $1 million for a little more than half a mile of a protected bike lane in an area that's already been identified for such improvements. I think the money could be spent, like Jordan had said, going straight into design, the 35%, the 65%, doing outreach, doing workshops, doing iterations. Because right now, if you have, if it's not, if the feasibility study won't be complete until next summer, and then we have to do design, and we have to do maybe bidding and construction, this probably won't be operational until 2028. And from the sounds of it, it looks, it sounds like this has been discussed since 2013. So if, you know, people are dying every day on our streets, you know, biking, walking, just trying to get around without a car. We know this to be an issue. We know this to be an epidemic. And we need these bike lanes built as quickly as possible. You know, I'm sure we've all been to Santa Monica. We've seen the great things they've done with their resources in a limited amount of time. And I want West Hollywood to be just as progressive and proactive in building safe bicycling infrastructure that also financially makes sense and is done at an appropriate amount of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Solomon, followed by Jesse Harris, followed by Kelly Polarsky.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Andrew Solomon, City of West Hollywood. I am here, I support the item, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the process that's happened and that's laid out. It's honestly, it's a little frustrating. If I'm reading the staff report correctly, council asked for an item for protected bike lanes in December of 2023. One year and five months later, we get this in front of us, which is a $400,000 study to an outside group with a delivery date for concept-level designs, not engineering-level designs, that'll happen in August of 2026, coming back from whenever you all had an item in 2023. And then my biggest fear is the sentence in the staff report. It's in the second to last paragraph, the second sentence. And it says, "Given these constraints, staff strongly recommends prioritizing the Beverly Boulevard Protected Bike Lanes feasibility study over the other listed projects." I know that we're short-staffed in this area right now in our city staff. But I think that, at least my feeling, is that Fountain is certainly the priority. This is a half-mile strip. Fountain has wrecks on it weekly, if not even more often than that. We even had a fatality there last October. So yes, to more bike lanes, yes, to more protected bike lanes. But I feel that we need to have our house in order. I hope that in your comments, you can ask the priority order of the projects that we do have in pipeline. And I think that it's really important that we focus on backfilling the vacant staff positions that have left. And I think this really brings to light the need that we need to have more staff resources, not just filling vacant positions, but more staff resources developed devoted to mobility. I know all three of you very well, and you work incredibly hard. And I feel like you need as much support as you can get here. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse Harris, followed by Kelly Polarsky, followed by Helen Krieger.
Hi, y'all. Jesse Harris, city of West Hollywood resident and urban planner by trade. I actually, I'm not gonna speak actually from the Bike Coalition tonight. You hear from me and other bike advocates in the city quite a bit. For that, I apologize. But I actually want to bring up someone who's not here. I ran into a community member literally right outside on my way here. My friend and I were carrying our bikes down the stairs from the library where I work today to attend this meeting. And she said, "Oh, my God, what a couple of she-ros. You brave these roads every day." And so once I explained to her why I was here, she said, "Oh, actually, I'm from New York, and I could never imagine riding on the streets here. It's just too scary." And I said, "You need to come to this meeting." Because actually, they don't hear that voice often. They think, in a lot of people's minds, bike improvements are for existing cyclists. But I'm a knucklehead who already rides in the street. These bike improvements, protected bike lanes, like the ones proposed on Beverly, are actually to encourage people like Tasha, who I met outside. Or I cannot tell you, I hear that sentiment every day, all the time. You should see me at a party. I'm like, y'all need to come to a public meeting. I swear, I'm gonna send a group text and say, "Come say that." I do also want to be clear about what this money is for. It's for a study, to study the feasibility of a bike lane on Beverly Boulevard. This isn't actually funding a bike lane, although I wish it were. I think that this money could be well-spent. I don't want it to see prioritized over other public projects, although I acknowledge that this is a flaw of a very bureaucratic system. I won't say more, but I do recommend the book by Ezra Klein and Derek Thompson that just came out. It's called Abundance. If you don't have time to read the book, just listen to the podcast. But I think it exemplifies what we're discussing here. Thank you so much to staff, and thank you for your time on the comment.
Thank you. Kelly Polarsky, followed by Helen Krieger. And I believe our last comment in chambers will come from David Eckert.
Hello again. So I am speaking on this item as a resident of WeHo and someone who bikes, walks, uses public transportation to get around. I fully support any effort to improve walkability, street safety planning, protected lanes for bikes, scooters, skateboards, unicycles, you name it. I wasn't initially planning on speaking on this item, but after discussion with my neighbors and recognizing the frustration I had as a professional engineer, I had to say something regarding the price and priority of this study. I echo my neighbor Helen's and Jesse's concern. As someone who lives on Farmosa and Fountain, $400,000 for a feasibility of something we already know works, while deprioritizing other projects that would truly save lives while vehicles are driving through apartment buildings on Fountain Avenue seems a little misplaced. I'm a construction project management consultant, and I think $400,000 for non-technical drawings is a little steep. In my experience, I would expect that for this price, you would at least get three options, some constructable roadway cross-sections, some landscape plans and specs. There's definitely a more cost-effective way to do this. The scope I read said non-engineering-level drawings and graphics not to scale, which just doesn't seem right for $400,000. Instead of needing to spend money on a study, let's go to design. Let's see if it works. Or let's put this money someplace where we can support long-range planning with the resources they need to do great work on the comprehensive long-range capital improvement projects prioritized by safety data. And also, I just wanted to let everyone here know that Engage WeHo has a heat map of crashes. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen Krieger, followed by David Eckert. Do we have anybody on Zoom? Okay, great.
Hi, City Council, hi, staff. I want to thank you all for this item and for continuing to prioritize protected bike lanes moving forward. I know that that was not initially the plan for this. And I do definitely strongly agree that any new bike lanes that we put in should be protected bike lanes because they are the safest bike lanes, both for cyclists and for all the road users on those roads, including cars. I'm not going to speak like others have about this particular study and the cost because I just don't know enough about that. I don't have that kind of that kind of knowledge. I will say that I also, when I saw the suggestion that staff had that we prioritize this above our other bike infrastructure projects, I know why you guys had said that because you are very understaffed. But it made me very nervous because I live on Fountain Avenue. And I was thinking in my head, oh, no, we've been waiting so long on Fountain Avenue. And I've been waiting to see any progress on that street, and I just haven't seen it. And the last that I heard, there was gonna be a design committee. And then I heard that that design committee hadn't met since May of 2024. And I thought, well, if that committee is done with its work, then it's time to move on to the next process on Fountain Avenue because accidents just continue to happen. And Andrew, it actually was not October, it was January was the last time someone died on that street. And I don't even want to call it accidents that are happening because we know why they're happening. It's because we have a freeway in the middle of our neighborhood. And there's, we didn't build it, so that's not on us. But it is on us to try to solve the problem. So instead of prioritizing one project over another, let's give our long-range planning division the staff and the resources they need to do the jobs that we've tasked them with. And let's not just do studies and have meetings, but let's actually build some of the things that we're talking about. And let's make the city safer for everyone who uses these roads. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. David Eckert is our last speaker. Okay.
Bringing it home. So I'm all for the protected bike lanes. My question is, I'm a little surprised that we're still talking, if it's even feasible for protected bike lanes on this stretch. Because I think by this point, we either know it's gonna can be done or won't be done. With that $400,000, why don't we just put in a temporary idea of what this is and pave the street and see? Because I feel like protected bike lanes throughout the city are still evolving. I don't know if it's time to lock in a plan. And let's just, you know, this little stretch is a great example to see what's going to work and not work. And I do wish this program or thought process was set before the Design District and Melrose Avenue was done because I think that was a major missed opportunity for protected bike lanes that really is in the heart of the city, rather than this little stretch of Beverly that is on the outskirts as an example for for all of us to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's our final public comment. Thank you all so much for your remarks. We can move back to council comments, deliberations. We have a speaker order here. No, okay, that's not accurate. Councilmember Erickson, would you like to be? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I think those are left over.
Left over, yeah. Okay, we'll ignore it. Councilmember Erickson, I think you're ready to speak.
Thank you so much. And I just want to echo what members of the public have been saying. I just want to give big kudos to Paige and the entire team, David, who I don't think is here, but Jennifer and Nick, you're great too. But, you know, I just want to call out some of the amazing staff who have stepped in for this in both tumultuous times and also good times when we're trying to look at the infrastructure of the city. So I really appreciate the work that you've been doing and the dedication. So I am in agreement with a lot of the members of the public. I don't think it's time to study this. I think it's time to build it. We don't need to spend $400,000 on a study. I brought this up to David earlier. I think that we should frankly start building the drawings, getting it done. I like the idea of getting something temporary in there to start seeing what it is to get as much feasibility in. But I think frankly, and I would be, I'm kind of shocked some people are here that aren't here tonight saying, "Oh, you spend $500,000 on consultants," and they're not here. But, you know, funny enough, here we are, right? That always criticized us for wanting to spend money on consultants. But now I'm actually in agreement. now I'm actually in agreement with that commentary. I know you're following good governance and everything that you normally would do in these processes. But I do think that instead of spending what is $400,000, just start building engineering plans, put in temporary facilities if possible, so we can start getting that process there. To members of the public, the council is going to be having a priorities discussion at our May meeting. So I would encourage you to all show up, where we will be discussing items that need priorities, because there are a lot of priorities that we ask staff to do. Fountain, Beverly, Santa Monica, a whole host of issues, including all the events. And so, we will be having that conversation. So your voice will be very needed there. I just want to agree. And Helen, I always love seeing you. I love seeing all of you. But Helen always, when she came to that meeting many years ago, when we were talking about this, you just always shine in that way. And so I want to thank you for your advocacy, as well as everyone else, but shouting out and giving flowers, because I live on Fountain. I agree. There was an accident last weekend. Paulo and I have an immediate text message exchange saying, here are all the photos that you need of the next accident on Fountain Avenue. And frankly, you know, we only do hear from naysayers who never ride a bike and just hate people on bikes and don't care about it. And that's fine. But you do. And you showed up, and you organized, and that's how it works. And so, I, I think it's time to stop wasting money, start building the documents, start putting it in, and just build the bike lanes and save, I can't believe I'm saying this, David, save some money, and not do a study that I frankly think is just a waste of funds at the moment. Incorporate it into whatever you need to. I know you might need to do a little bit of feasibility studying, but just build them. And that's kind of where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you on the speaker list now, Vice Mayor? Okay, great. Vice Mayor Heilman.
Thank you. We could build the existing plans with the existing bike lane, paint it green, as was directed, without this. And that's what I think we should do. I know that there's a desire for protected bike lanes. The current plans have a bike lane. It isn't a protected bike lane. But rather than spending this money and delaying other projects, we could just move forward with the existing plans. I, you know, I understand, I think what Councilmember Erickson is saying is, just build the existing plans and put in a protected bike lane. But we don't know whether that will work at this location. There's no question that protected bike lanes do work in some locations, but with the infrastructure that we have, we don't know that it can be done, and it can be done feasibly and retain the lanes of traffic and the parking that was part of the original plan. So I say we just go forward with the existing plan with the bike lane, build it, paint it green. It's a very small stretch of Beverly Boulevard. Doesn't make sense to me to do a feasibility study or try to build something there that we don't know actually can work. So I know that a number of the speakers spoke about the protected bike lanes on San Vicente in the city of Los Angeles. I drive on San Vicente. They connect to bike lanes on Venice. I have to say, they're a failure from the standpoint of people actually utilizing them. I know there are some who do. It's, they're, they're not really working. And people don't want to be close to the curb, next to cars, where there are trash bins. And I see people actually riding their bikes, even though there are protected bike lanes, riding it in the street, because it's, for some reason, they avoid those bike lanes. I have seen people ride in the bike lanes, but not that often. So I don't know that this would actually provide much of a connection to the San Vicente bike lanes in the city of LA. So I'm in favor of just moving forward with the project as it stands.
Councilmember Meister?
Hi. Thank you, Mayor. So I agree. I don't, first of all, it's a really small stretch. And it seems to me that it gives a false sense of protection, because then you're going into the city of LA, or you're going into Beverly Hills, where there aren't protected bike lanes. And most of Beverly is the city of LA. And what I was thinking is, rather than do this now, to, to continue with the, the plan that's already been approved on Beverly with the streetscape project and having green lanes, and then just, let's, let's, you know, work with the city of LA and work with the city of Beverly Hills to do something that makes sense. It just, you know, I can understand, I understand the, the lost opportunity possibly on Melrose. Santa Monica, that goes from, you know, it's a longer distance, and it covers most of our city. But Beverly is literally like three big blocks, you know? I mean, that's it. And it just doesn't make sense to me to spend this kind of money on it. And we can try the green lanes and see how it goes. To answer Vice Mayor Heilman's question about why, why aren't people biking in the bike lane, I know Kimberly Winnick, who is a biker, bicyclist, she said, because they don't, street sweeping doesn't, they don't clean the, the bike lanes. And so, it ends up that you're dealing with garbage. And that's why bicyclists are driving, are biking outside of the bike lane. So on this small stretch, I just don't, I don't see that this should be a priority. And as you mentioned, there are other, as Councilmember Erickson had mentioned, there are other projects that everyone would like to get done. Some of us maybe not, but still, they're, they're moving forward. So let's focus on that. And not these like, you know, couple of blocks that, that makes, that, it's like the bridge to nowhere, right? The bridge to LA, bridge to Beverly Hills, and, and no, and they don't, again, it's a false sense of, of protection. So I would say that we don't do this, that we continue with, the streetscape project is already planned, and focus on, on other projects that seem to be a priority for the community.
Director Marisic, did you want to jump in?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to come back to something that was in Paige's presentation earlier, with respect to why staff brought this forward as the next step. And that's because we really don't know what space will be given up to create the space that's needed for the protected bike lane. That's really what this study is intended to uncover for us and identify what those trade-offs may be. You know, so I just wanted to make sure that that's at the forefront of the council members' discussion, because, you know, the form, the previous direction that we were operating on from the council said to move forward with this unless there is no room. But there really are a lot of different ways that room could be there or not there. And that's what this work would really look at. So I just wanted to add that again for context about why, why staff brought this forward.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the context. And if I may also, I know Councilmember Hanger signed up to speak, but I'm going to jump in here, too, as somebody who threw a wrench into plans that began in 2013 around the streetscape master plan redesign. So I realize that that's sort of what is happening here. We, you know, 12 years ago, as a city set course to redesign the Beverly Boulevard Street, along with Melrose and a number of other streets in that Design District area. And here we are 12 years later, trying to do something that takes us very much back to the beginning. And that is a choice of this council and this community to help us make in what we're doing. But I think part of what you talked about, a missed opportunity with Melrose, is why I think Councilmember Erickson and I, when we saw the opportunity in Beverly Boulevard moving forward, and sort of felt like this was a hail mary, to make sure that, you know, this audience of people who are coming into West Hollywood and the way that, you know, walkability and cycling and a really climate-forward mentality is what our city is embracing in a deeper way, that this was a curveball that may be worth throwing. And I understand that the, the pullback of plans and the, the timing on it is really frustrating in many ways. And I'm certainly, you know, worried about the, the priority setting and the discussion, too. And so I think there's a conversation about how this specific plan moves forward, and then how the rest of our city priorities move forward also still to have. But I think it's a dance worth having right now, even though it is just a small stretch of, of lanes. The lanes that you mentioned on San Vicente are ineffective, because they're not part of a bigger network of lanes that enable a bigger feeling and mentality of safety that hasn't yet been there. And if we miss our opportunity to contribute to that, then that is what, you know, what we're doing to contribute to that. Beverly Hills is in fact, just weeks away from building out their protected bike lanes. So there's already, and I could be off on that data, staff should definitely check me if I'm wrong, but that there are bike lanes coming from our neighboring city already, and that we're a part of the regional efforts to bring more online. So I think that's sort of the pain and the frustration that we're in as decision makers, is recognizing an opportunity to do something that we may never get again in our lifetime, and that will make a tremendous difference, even in such a small way that we play the role, but in the bigger regional conversation that's been happening. So I think that's sort of where I'm at when I'm looking at this, and wanted to sort of set the context again, because it seems very wise to go with what you're offering, Vice Mayor Heilman, about, there is, you know, I was looking on the plans, and there were sort of options about a bike lane or not, and where it was feasible or not. And it sounds like we're in agreement that there would be a bike lane that would be green striped, and that's great. And we may be the one part of the strip of the region that is no longer protected if we make that decision. So that's sort of the mindset that I'm in, is that it feels like the region, and everything's moving in a direction that we would be the ones left out because of decision-making tonight. So that's where I'm at. Councilmember Hanger, did you want to jump into the discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. I think you said everything that I was going to say, but more eloquently. I just wanted to actually acknowledge staff and thank staff, because this was just done at the, at the direction of the previous council. So the previous council asked this to be brought back, and that is why it's brought back today, for the council to determine and whether we want to pay $395,000 for a feasibility study. That is what we're here for, at the direction of the previous council, and not because of staff. So I definitely want to thank staff for the support. You know, I see this also as an opportunity, an opportunity to create additional safety, additional networks of safety in our city. And if we don't take the bulls by the horn now, we may not have the opportunity again later. And like Ms. Krieger and like Councilmember Erickson, I also live off of Fountain. It is a highway. Somebody actually died in January. There's countless accidents, cars crashing into buildings. So that is also another priority project that we have. We have lots of priority projects here in our city. And I do thank staff for working diligently and very hard to basically get all of our, each council member's priorities, objectives onto our agenda, to get it working for our community. So I thank you. So I am in favor of safety. I am in favor of taking this opportunity. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson, I saw you sign back up.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Nick, I have a couple of just next steps questions. How, how long would it take to get design options done for a protected bike lane?
As part of this study?
Well, as part of, let's, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Madam Mayor, it doesn't sound like any of us want to do this study.
I don't think any of us.
Well, it sounds like a couple of us might want to do a study.
If you're going to do it, I think if you don't do a study, you're exposing the city to liability.
So, thank you, Vice Mayor Heilman. So my question is, is can you do design options and put in a piece of the study for the small portion? Can you do two, can we walk and chew gum at the same time?
We could certainly revise the scope of work, but the, we need to look at how to make, you know, what the trade-offs are, whether space is coming from parking, from travel lanes, from sidewalk. That, that, that design element needs to be identified as, as part of work that has yet to be done. What those priorities are in terms of the trade-offs, that's why staff was proposing this process, to, to come up with a, a solution that would identify the best option. If, so that's, that's really why, if the direction from council would be to pursue a different process to be able to determine that, you know, we certainly could take that back and try to come up with a different approach. But there, it doesn't really get around the idea that there needs to be an evaluation of the amount of space and what options could fit and what the trade-offs are.
Yeah, happy to have an evaluation. But the problem for me, and I think many members of the community, is, okay, we approve, we give you $400,000, you come back in 15 months, and then we're like, go build bike lanes. Great. Just, it's, and I just, this isn't on any of you, it's just such a waste of time and public resources. It just really is. When the city of LA can build something in five to six months along Hollywood Boulevard and get those things done with, it just seems like we are missing an opportunity, and we're just kicking this can down the road. And so, I'm not, my, you know, and other people can speak, we want to make sure our city stays out of whatever liability risk it is. I think that would be minimal, but we'll let the attorneys, you know, chime in there. But I frankly would rather just give direction to look at this, give you a very limited timeline to come back to us, and then get it done, and start moving forward, instead of two years down the road that we're back here in the same process. And, you know, we're just waiting on the same question. We're discussing the same question.
I have a, maybe a suggestion. I don't want us to be analogized to the city of LA, because they don't even pave their roads. But we have a plan already that has a bike lane. You came forward with a feasibility study that gives us several different options for protected bike lanes, some by the curb, some with sort of a weaving path with, what if we just went forward with the project as is, and you studied putting in those, you know, sort of white, not poles, but the, the dividers that divide the street. They're not ideal protected bike lanes, but that would limit the scope of the feasibility study. It wouldn't necessarily require the movement of those bike lanes anywhere. And we would just be analyzing, can we put in the bike lane where it is with green and some dividers along that path? Just, do you know which ones I'm talking about? Helen is looking like she knows.
I do know. I mean, but we do have a lot of things to consider. There's currently parking in that area, so we'd have to look at all of those different aspects when considering putting in, no matter what we do, we'd have to, have to do some type of study.
For the parking, for the vehicles to get in and out.
Correct. And for the street sweepers to get in and all the different aspects that go along with any, any new infrastructure that you install. The unintended consequences of, of a good idea.
Are people interested in moving forward with looking at the existing bike lanes in the plan and how we could protect those? Is that something?
So may I, may I ask a question, Mayor? Thank you. So Vice Mayor Heilman, are you essentially suggesting just do a quick build, as well as then do the study to talk about the feasibility options on parking and these things as, you know, I think staff is understanding we want it done soon, but assuming just doing a quick build of the plan with those additions of the white things that Helen has a much eloquent name, more eloquent name for?
So I probably need to step in on the quick build part, only because we currently have Melrose, which is our next leg of the streetscape design. So that's our next phase of the project, and then we would be moving down to Beverly. We don't anticipate getting down to Beverly until probably the end of 2027, as things currently go. So if we're talking, so, but again, you know, we're going to be having the priority meeting as well, setting the priorities. But currently, as it stands, we're at about 30% design on Beverly. And we still have to get the undergrounding done by Edison, which we don't anticipate starting until July, which will take some time. And then we could start the process, even looking at the process of starting construction on, on Melrose. We're not, we're not even looking at until '27 on this project. I just want to be realistic and upfront.
I guess what I was thinking is, moving forward with some kind of feasibility study, but maybe limiting it to the existing location in the design plan, rather than having to reconfigure everything that has already been designed, keep the bike lanes where they are, and ask staff to do a feasibility study of how those can be protected to the maximum amount. Again, not the ideal protected bike lane, but it is. amount. Again, not the ideal protected bike lane, but it is a short stretch. So that's what I was thinking.
Can you come back to us by the end of the year? I know you're giving me that look, but.
Come back to you with, with options? I, if-
I think we would need to discuss with the consultant about what a modified scope of work would look like and what timeline could be possible for, you know, if we're just looking at one option or two options, let's say, instead of three, if we're doing some kind of abbreviated process, for example, is what I'm hearing is being discussed, what would that mean in terms of a timeline and a cost? But we could certainly discuss that with them while still understanding what it is that we need to be able to come up with to move something into an actual design for engineering.
And I think there was also an outreach component as well.
There was an outreach component as well, so we could revisit that, you know, and look for any ways to sort of tighten up the timeline and, and see what could be done in the most expedient fashion.
If we're not removing the street parking or changing the configuration of the sidewalks other than what was already planned, then I don't know that we need a lot of outreach to the neighboring businesses if all we're talking about is the existing bike lane and providing some additional protection toward it.
I, I don't want to speak on the specifics, but I believe to, in order to incorporate the Class II bike lane within the existing curb-to-curb width, that the, the space was already allocated, the space that was available was allocated to the Class II bike lane in each direction. So as Paige showed in the presentation, in order to incorporate a protective facility, however, with, among the different options, there's some that require more space and some that require less. There still is additional width that is required to be identified. And if that's coming out of the parking, if it's coming out, I believe the travel lanes have already been narrowed to accommodate the Class II facility. So is it, does it mean the curbs in a different location? Does it mean we are, you know, impacting parking in certain locations? I think those are the issues that we have not identified yet, and we would like the opportunity to bring those to the council for more direction. But we can certainly go back to the consultant and discuss a revised scope of work incorporating the, the discussion here and ultimate direction from the council to see how we can provide a more expeditious path to what it is that you want to see.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, please, Councilmember.
Do we, do we have enough room now to do, to paint a green lane?
Yes, that's the Class II.
Right now? I mean, even before we go worry about the streetscape project?
You know, I'd have to, we'd have to look at that. And right now, until we repave the street, I don't know that we would want to make that a priority bike area. Because it's a concrete street, it's not in the best of condition. Well, it's an, it's an okay condition, but it's not in the best of condition. But we would, we would have to look and see. It doesn't appear to be, I'm looking at it right now, it doesn't appear like we have that much extra room. Right now, we have the sheroes in the street, just the regular sheroes in the street. I don't think we have, have the space to put in the, the bike lane, the Class II bike lane.
Currently, the updated master plan has the Class II bike lane with the green stripe. And I think that's, so you're, I appreciate the opportunity for like the protected, quick model. And I've seen, my concern with that would be the vehicles, right? We couldn't just, it's, there's inside parking. But I'm curi, we know that there's been models where they up over the sidewalk, back over. So we're not taking away the curb cutouts. We're moving up and over them, like little speed bumps for bicycles. I've seen cities do that. So I appreciate what Vice Mayor Heilman's recommending around a modified approach to that. And I think the plans that we've seen are very, they're sort of back to the start. It's, and, you know, how could a whole sidewalk become that? And I think that we're talking about something that feels a little bit modified in between. And so it feels like a really specific conversation with the consultant. I wouldn't encourage them to listen to this entire deliberation, of course, but something close to that. Because we know we're not trying to go back to the beginning. If we want to see this done, we don't want to hold up the entirety of the streetscape beyond some reasonable amount of time. But I, yes, what could work to allow for the cars to stay where they are or bikes to swerve a little bit around?
Sort of like a hybrid approach.
A hybrid approach. Sorry, I called you Heilman. Yeah, there-
Do you need a motion?
We have a comment over here from, yeah. Councilmember Hing?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So no matter what, there's got to be a feasibility study. That's what I'm understanding.
Yes, that's, again, the way, the way we've looked at this, again, based on the direction from the council at the previous time this was heard, we identified that that was the next step. And so we scoped that out to try to incorporate what we, what we felt we heard in the last council meeting on this topic with the prior council. But I think we're hearing now that there may be desire for, if there to be a more limited scope of work, to be able to accomplish a more targeted or focused study that could move, move the process along in a quicker timeline at lower cost.
So I appreciate the spirit of it. I know it was at the direction of the previous council. And I think for me, it was just a sticker shock value at $395,000 for a non-technical study. So, you know, I don't, you probably don't know the answer to this, but I wonder where that number came from. And I am amenable to what the vice mayor had suggested. If we go in that direction, how soon can buildings start?
So assuming this is being constructed along with the, of the larger streetscape improvements, I would defer back to Helen in terms of the timeline for the overall project.
We're currently, the way the streetscape plan is programmed, we're looking at 20, still at '27.
Still at '27.
Yeah, '27, towards the end of '27, because we still have to do the undergrounding of all the utilities. And then also, we are working on Melrose currently, and we'll be starting that in, in 20, probably early 2027, late '26, we'll be starting that project. So '27, end of '27 would be the earliest. We could look at starting this unless priorities were changed.
Got it.
And we still have design to do, of course.
Got it. Thank you. So I appreciate Edison. I know they do a lot of great work for our city. So I, with the other project that we're discussing, Edison, the undergrounding is the issue with Edison, right?
Well, the undergrounding is, is the first step that we have to take for Beverly. We're currently finishing undergrounding over on Almont, LaPire, and then that area.
Yeah, sorry to jump in, but I do want to add what is happening with Edison. So the undergrounding of the utilities on Beverly are part of the Rule 28 work that Edison funds in cities. And right now, that program has been paused by Edison. They're finishing this project because it was already underway. So we want to make sure that it gets done because it represents a major infrastructure improvement for our city. So they're already almost completed with their design. They're going out to bid and they're expecting to begin construction in July of this year, or, you know, just by late summer. So once they finish constructing all, you know, finish all the undergrounding, then that's the earliest that the city can move to begin, you know, the work that will require new sidewalks, new landscape, new lighting, and repaving of the entire Beverly Boulevard. That will include whether it's the original, you know, bike lanes that were part of that design or if we end up with the protected bike lanes. But that is the sequencing, and that's why that process is already underway. And it's so close to being completed that, you know, no other city is going to get Rule 28 funding at this point because Edison does not have funding available for that. And so it's, it's a major savings for our city. If we don't get this done now, we will lose the opportunity to help, have all the undergrounding on Beverly Boulevard, which is major, as well as Robertson between Melrose and Beverly. So all that undergrounding has to be done first so that the city can proceed with the next step of the streetscape project. So that's what's adding to some of the timeline that we're talking about. If we were not waiting for, we were not doing undergrounding, then the project could move. But that's the first step because you can't do anything else because you would have to dig it up again and start over. So that's, that's part of the complexity and sort of the timeline that we're dealing with here.
Thank you for the clarification. And this is why we appreciate Edison. They keep our city up and running.
Councilmember Erickson?
So I can make a suggestion. So it, I mean, just based on what we've heard from Jackie and from Helen, it sounds like 2027 is, as soon as that we start construction of the bike lane. Understanding that, it sounds like the council, as far as this contract is not really, or at least maybe the consensus, our majority, is not interested in staff coming back with a feasibility study that includes different alternatives and public outreach. But instead, coming back with a contract that provides a, a scope of work that includes constructing or designing a bike, a bike lane, protected bike lane or modify protected bike lane based on the existing scope. And that the council's not really looking to have a number of different alternatives. And so that, that would be a lot less expensive than what you're seeing here right now. But it's given staff and the consultant the ability to design what they think is best based on the current design of the project and what's best practices as far as modifications.
Yeah, Councilmember Meister?
Thank you. I, I think that if we're not looking at this happening tomorrow because it's going to be 2027, honestly, like if we're going to move forward, then I would rather do the feasibility study. It may not have to start tomorrow because we have time, right? How long does the feasibility study take? Just-
We have it scoped out for about a year.
About a year. So, you know, we have the time. I think if we're going to do it, then let's do it right with the feasibility study. We, it's not like we haven't spent $400,000 on other things before. And it seems to me it's important, especially when we're putting so much money into the streetscape project.
Councilmember Erickson, you were next.
Yeah, so I guess this also depends on our, our priorities conversation. Because if we move this up in our priorities list, 2027 is kind of off the table when we might be able to look at stuff. I mean, Nick, Paige, Jennifer, Helen, can you do this and have a design and have shovel-ready documents by the end of the year?
Just, but then we would have to bench the undergrounding.
I understand, but I'm just, I'm trying to get, there's a sequence in which I'm going, yes, undergrounding. But is it feasible to have those things done?
We may be able to have a design by the end of the year. And then, you know, I'd have to go back and check. We're at about 30 to 40% now on CDs. So there's a possibility. But we would, of course, then suspend undergrounding.
Vice Mayor Heilman?
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense to suspend the undergrounding. That's an important part of this project that all of the people who were involved in the planning of the project agreed to. And I, I think it's also a safety concern. I, I don't, responding to Councilmember Meister, I don't think we're saying that we don't want a feasibility study. What we're saying is that the feasibility study is very limited, and it's focused on the existing design of the Boulevard improvements and looking at how we can take the existing bike lane in that project and make it protected. So that's, I, I thought that's where we were headed, and I thought that's what the city manager was suggesting.
What, but what I would say, though, is this is supposed to be a beautification project, the streetscape project. So to spend all of this money on Melrose, on Beverly, on Robertson, and then have those white things sticking up as the answer, I don't think, I, I don't think that's what anybody envisioned.
Well, and they may not be the answer. Sorry.
Yeah. I mean, so I, I just want to make sure that there are other options, and I want to make sure that they are practical and, you know, that they don't, they don't undermine the whole point of the streetscape project, the beautification of Beverly, those three little blocks. But yeah, but we want them to be, you know, we want it to be beautiful just like we want Robertson to be beautiful, just like we want Melrose to be beautiful. So I, I just don't want to see us make a decision that's going to undo what, you know, what we were working towards all those years. And it's not just residents, it's the businesses too that participated very heavily in this decision.
I, I think I was referencing what the mayor said, and I withdraw the white sticking-up things, whatever they're called. But there may be ways to provide protection that don't make it ugly, that are little bumps along the road that still provides a sense of protection and separation without completely changing the configuration of the streets. So, yeah.
Councilmember Hing, were you signed up to speak next, or?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Erickson.
Sure, thanks. I have no idea how I'm going to vote on this because, one, I'm frustrated because it just seems like we, and this is not a criticism of staff, this is a criticism, I guess, maybe of our bureaucratic process that we have before us, that everything just is, everything for our streets, which several meetings ago, I went through a very exhaustive list, and I'm happy to bring it back up, about when our streets were actually updated. Beverly has not been updated since cityhood in many different ways. And Helen, you provided that list with me. I actually have it, and now I kind of want to bring it up, right? But, and I'm going to, because that's why we save emails, if I, if this thing even works. But it's just, and Vice Mayor Heilman is right, drive north of, south of Willoughby on Fairfax, and you, you get a different feeling of the road. But I just don't understand how, if other cities can do it, why can't we? And is it going to take another death? Is it going to take another car accident? Is it going to take another car crashing into a business? I don't know. And we've been sitting here for five years, and we've been pushing to have better infrastructure, and our streets are frankly outdated. And we have a plan, sure, it's an unprotected bike lane. I just don't understand why it's not getting done. And something not happening till 2027, just, it's, you know, who knows if any of us will be here in 2027, right? You know, by God's gift and grace. But I think ultimately for me, it's, I, I want something done quick. And I think we're going to have to have that priorities conversation in May or whenever. And the priorities conversation got shifted. It was supposed to be at this meeting, right? And now it's not. And that would have been helpful. So that's the issue when we can't even discuss priorities. And I, I just think we're wasting the public's time, and we're wasting a lot of money on stuff when we just need to start building and improving our streets. So that's it.
In, in defense of staff, we're not always very good at setting priorities. We want everything done.
Yes.
I, I don't know if we need a formal motion or if staff feels that they've been given sufficient direction to revise the scope of this contract. If you want a motion, I would move that we ask staff to revise the scope of this contract as has previously been discussed. And I don't know that you have to come back to us for it, but Paige, you're shaking your head yes, you need to come back.
Yeah, I think we can, we can certainly follow up with the consultant based on the direction here tonight and turn something around and put it on a future consent calendar, probably in early May, I would imagine, probably not soon enough for the next meeting, but two meetings from now. And then just make sure that that meets with, with your direction.
I'll make that as a motion.
And I just want to say, for context, I, I hear staff loud and clear on the multiple sort of external factors, the 2027 deadline around the, you know, SCE Edison undergrounding project, and that has been a long priority for the community. So I think what is heartening about the action that we took a couple of years ago is that we're here now being able to do something before 2027 when the opportunity would have been completely closed. So as frustrating and challenging trying to move to the next step is, it feels like we've given ourselves the best opportunity to do so and to create the best potential plan to move forward. And we're bound to this timeline regardless unless we truly decide not to go with undergrounding, which I think would cause quite the stir. So I don't think that that's something we're doing. But just as a reminder, this is one of many, many bike lane initiatives that have been set forward by members of this council, and many other things are a part of that future priority discussion. So I think it's important that this, which became one of the first initiatives that sort of started the bike conversation, is moving forward in the way it can. We have other things that'll be a part of a priority discussion in the next month or so, and we're making movements. So I really appreciate you all helping us through this conversation tonight. Vice Mayor Heilman said he had a motion on the table. Do you have any other comments, questions? Okay. Move forward, the bike lanes. We're going to take a quick break before we come back for item E3.
I think we're ready to get started. Thank you for the nice break. I do not know that we need a full and comprehensive staff report tonight, but thank you all for being here with us. We're on item E3, WeHo Pride-related agreements and 2025 planning updates. How wonderful.
Mayor, I have a disclosure. Can I make a disclosure?
Oh, we have a disclosure.
Oh, yeah. We love disclosures. Okay. I'd like to disclose that the organization I work for has reached out to JJLA about some of their services. There is no relationship at this time. I am not the decision maker, but I did want to be transparent and check with the city attorney if I am able to vote on recommendations four and five.
Thank you, Councilmember Meister. Thank you for that disclosure. And based on the Political Reform Act, that would not constitute a disqualifying conflict with financial interests, so you are able to participate in this action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, are there any public speakers on this side?
No, I don't think so. Do we have a public commentary?
No speakers.
I don't know if our staff has anything they really feel they need to share. If so, have at it. Otherwise, I'm prepared to move the item. We should have put this on consent, I'm calling.
They've realized amnesty.
Maybe staff can just explain what the item is for the public and then we can motion?
Thank you, Councilmember.
Good evening. I'll just give a brief overview. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Carrie McCormick, Event Services Coordinator. Also here this evening are Yvonne, Director of Community Services, Cleo Smith, Event Services Manager, Megan Reeth, Event Services Supervisor, and Jeff Consoletti of JJLA. The item before you this evening provides an update on WeHo Pride planning, including the schedule of events for the weekend as well as the associated street closures. And this evening's item makes several recommendations related to the 2025 event, which include approving an agreement for traffic control infrastructure to secure the event's footprint, as well as authorizing the city manager to execute cosponsorship agreements associated with this year's community group program. Also tonight, the council is being asked to consider a city presence in the World Pride Parade to be held in Washington DC the weekend after WeHo Pride. And lastly, at its meeting on September 16th, 2024, the council directed staff to negotiate an amendment to the production services agreement with the city's hired contractor, JJLA. This item recommends the approval of two agreements related to the future of WeHo Pride. One, that extends the production services agreement with JJLA for the production of WeHo Pride from 2026 to 2030. And then the other, to coincide with that production services agreement, the council will also consider approving a multi-year cosponsorship and permit-to-use-city-property agreement with JJLA for the Out Loud Music Festival and WeHo Pride Parade. Thank you very much. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you very much. Are there... You have a question, Councilmember Meister?
Yeah. No, I just... It's a comment. And I'm supportive of this item. I just, as we move forward, as, you know, things keep getting more and more expensive and everything, I would love for us to think about some kind of senior discount program on tickets for the future. It doesn't have to be next year or whatever, but this is something I think we should consider as, you know, as we move forward.
That's a conflict.
Well, hey.
That's a conflict for the two of us.
Yeah, I think that's not fair. We'll allow it.
Way past senior.
Are there any other comments or questions? Councilmember Hang.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the very robust presentation tonight. You know, I just wanted to make a comment. Since the city came into partnership with JJLA, it's only gotten better every year. And I'm not... I'm speaking not just for myself, but on behalf of the entire community. I'm so excited for Pride this year. I'm so excited for Pride next year, and it's just going to get better and better. Thank you.
I'll just add too, I know in the context of so many prides across the country wondering about their financial streams and funding sources, that we are not only making sure that 2025 goes off without a hitch, but we're investing long-term in contracts, I think is a really remarkable act of the city and this government that we're choosing to do that. We thank JJLA for approving, in so many ways, over and over again, that you are such an exceptional partner for us to work with in creating a safe and vibrant and joyous pride experience. And we are also very much looking forward to taking over the streets of Santa Monica Boulevard once again in what feels like just a few weeks. I can't believe it.
And we're not doing a float in LA Pride?
Oh, that's...
Right? That was just a question. I can't...
So, this item approves participation in World Pride, which is the same weekend as LA Pride.
I just wanted clarification on that because it was horrible last year. So, you know, there you go.
We're looking forward to this. Thank you so much. I think we have a motion in a second on the table.
You might have to re-motion. Let me see.
Okay.
Nope, there it is. Okay.
Great. All right. And we'll move on to, I believe, our final item of tonight, E4, our Commission Advisory Board Appointments and Reappointments. I understand we may not be ready for our at-large appointments tonight. Is that where we're at? Okay.
We do have some speakers.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's start with our speakers and then we'll come back to what we can do. We'll start with Anthony Vulin, and then Jessica Hensier, and then Joe Green after that.
So, there's a little bit of lag in Granicus, but we'll... There we go.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, Anthony Vulin. Coming before you tonight to ask for a reappointment at-large for the Business License Commission. I was appointed in 2021 by Lindsay Horvath and then have become an at-large member ever since. I've been Chair of Business License Commission in the past and honored to have served for the last several years and would love to be part of the commission again. Thank you so much for your time and consideration, whether it's tonight or when you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Hensier, followed by Joe Green.
My name's Jessica Hensier. I am an urban planning professional and land use consultant. I lived in the city of West Hollywood for 15 years, and I have applied for both the Planning Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission. I believe my experience in land use and planning, as well as my professional knowledge, would be a valuable asset to either commission. I don't represent any projects in the city of West Hollywood, and my work experience gives me perspective on how policy decisions affect feasibility, as well as insight understanding of balancing community concerns and project goals. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. And Joe Green's our final speaker. You're in the system as Joe Grebe. We know who you are.
Good evening, Council. Joe Green, City of West Hollywood resident and co-chair of the LA County Commission on HIV. Tonight, I wanted to say it's a pleasure to see you all. I've seen you all throughout the year at the T-Dore events and World AIDS Day events and the Disabilities Advisory Board's events, which is why I'm here. Hopefully, I will be one of the at-large appointees. I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Heilman for your appointment last year. I'm very grateful for that and look forward to potentially serving again this year. Thank you all very much.
I believe that's our final commenter. So, we have some at... Or, sorry, some direct appointments to start with. So...
Yes, we have a direct appointment by Councilmember Hang to the Rent Stabilization Commission. Are you ready, Councilmember?
Thank you. No, I'm not ready yet. Thank you.
And then we have some direct appointments to the various advisory boards. The first one is the Disability Advisory Board. We have a direct appointment by Mayor Byers and Councilmember Erickson. Are either of you ready?
Go ahead.
I'm reappointing Yola Doree.
Thank you.
I'd like to appoint Joe Green. Thank you.
Congrats.
For our Older Adults Advisory Board, two direct appointees, Vice Mayor Heilman and Councilmember Erickson. Either of you ready?
I'm not.
I'm appointing Russell Holgren. And he doesn't know yet because I couldn't call him today. So, congrats, Russell.
Moving on to the Russian Advisory Board, direct appointment by Councilmember Erickson.
This one is Russian speaking? Sorry. Eugene Maysky?
Moving on to the Social Justice Advisory Board, we have direct appointment by Councilmember Erickson and Councilmember Meister.
I'm ready. Yes, I'd like to appoint Kenneth Jones.
Councilmember Erickson?
I'm waiting to... I don't believe the person I wanted to apply, applied, so I'm going to wait till the next meeting.
Okay. Transgender Advisory Board, we have Councilmember Erickson for his direct appointee and Councilmember Hang.
Yes, Amani Day, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Hang?
Thank you. I'm not ready yet. Thank you.
And lastly, the Women's Advisory Board, Councilmember Erickson and Councilmember Hang.
Nikki Page?
Okay. Councilmember Hang?
Sonia Sebastian.
Okay. So, for the bodies that we have, full direct appointees for the next meeting, we'll bring back the at-larges, as well as those that are outstanding. We'll have to fill those before we can do the at-larges.
Thank you very much. All right.
Oh, sorry, Madam Mayor, if possible. I know that we just got notice about our transgender advisory board having its third consecutive missed meeting, I believe.
In this quorum, yes.
I don't know if we need to convene a quick meeting of our subcommittee, but there seems to be, I don't know what's going on, but that body, it's worrisome to me, given the current issues that are going on, that they're not meeting. So, maybe the subcommittee meeting group could meet with the city clerk and the city manager real quick to discuss if there's any emergency alternatives we might need to discuss for that board. I am concerned that they haven't met for three months, given the attacks on our trans and gender non-conforming communities. So, that was just a suggestion. I thought I didn't... I didn't have time to talk to Councilmember Meister because I know I'm saying, "You want to be on another quick meeting?" But, you know, I just wanted to put that out there.
Yes, we can definitely get that scheduled for you.
Thank you.
And Janet, can we get an update, based on the appointments that were made today, an update on those positions that are still outstanding? And I know that Melissa previously provided us some attendance reports. I think it would be helpful that when we get an update of the commission appointments that are still outstanding and the applicants, that we also include within that of the current applicants who are current commissioners, have they had attendance problems?
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, are we ready to move forward to the at-large appointments for the commissions, not including the rent stabilization?
I don't think people are prepared tonight.
I'm still interviewing at-large planning commissioners.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we'll agendize it for the 21st meeting this month and...
Correct.
Terrific. Okay, thank you so much. Well, folks, I think we've reached the end of our agenda. Well, we have nothing on excluded consent calendar, so we'll move into our final public comment period. Do we have anyone signed up? Oh, I see three people. Okay, terrific. Barry Nutivich, are you still with us? Nutivich? Okay. Mikey Friedman, followed by Andrew Solomon, who also looks like he left. Okay?
Mikey Friedman, West Hollywood. I wanted to see if John was going to walk out on my comment again. A few random thoughts. I saw a no bicycle on the sidewalk sign on a pole on Santa Monica Boulevard, and I wanted to know, where are the no scooters on sidewalk signs? Are they there? I didn't see any. And I wondered, is Sunset still part of WeHo? You know, Rockin' Riley's is gone, and they had a wonderful St. Patrick's Day party in the parking lot. Why can't the city do that? Why does everything have to be LGBTQ+? Why does everything... This is not a gay city. It is a gay-friendly city, and that's according to my friend Barbara Meltzer. Not my words, hers. And what about the Sunset Musical Music Festival that they used to have that was private? Why can't the city do something like that? Danny Hang was at La Petite Four for dinner the other night, and I was happy to see that one of you actually came up to Sunset and spent a little money and had a lovely dinner. And I'm sure your dinner was lovely because it's a great place. But La Petite Four is gone, Rockin' Riley's is gone, Sunset Deli, Warrior Hudson House, The Den. And that's just in the last two months. Also, Artha is now gone, as is Equinox, and Chase Bank, and not in West Hollywood, but Papa Christos and Genghis Khan are going. So, this is sad. You need to figure out a way to keep these businesses in business. Also, Wendy Goldman talked about parks. Why not have the developers put in parks on their vacant property until they...
Thank you. Okay. We will move on to Councilmember comments and meeting attendance reports. Who would like to begin? Don't all jump at once.
Mayor?
Councilmember... Oh, Council... Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, that's right.
If you don't mind.
No, please.
Earlier during city manager comments, Councilmember Erickson asked for an update on the public safety technology items. So, we can have Danny Rivas just give a brief update before Councilmember comments.
Great. Thank you, David. And good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Danny Rivas, Director of Community Safety for the city. So, in terms of our public safety technology, we did run into some unexpected delays as it relates to some materials, but I am happy to report that our real-time watch center in our West Hollywood Sheriff's Station is almost nearly complete. It's expected to be completed by the end of this month. We actually have furniture that's being installed next week, and the monitors and computers and whatnot is going to be installed thereafter. We also just received our mobile security camera trailer last week, and we had a good team of our special teams deputies that actually went through the training as well. And then we're in our final stages with actually establishing an MOU with two locations in our city that will essentially allow us to deploy our drone as first responders. And so, all of that, in short, should be complete by next month, ahead of Pride. The only thing that we are experiencing a slight delay on is going to be our fixed cameras. And so, we should start that process by Pride and then hopefully have it completed, I would say, by July. But just know that even for Pride, we are going to be installing a number of cameras temporarily, as we typically do with any of our major events for public safety purposes. So, that concludes my update and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for my colleagues? Okay, thank you so much, Director Rivas. Okay, Councilmember Hang, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as my meetings and attendance, I attended the grand opening, the re-grand opening of Jim Bar. They have brand-new TVs, brand-new bathrooms. It's beautiful. The Chamber did a great event. Our mayor held big scissors and cut the ribbon nicely. I attended the 2025 West Hollywood Employee Recognition Awards. Congratulations to all of our city employees. I attended the Los Angeles Legislators receptions with Jewish leaders at the Jewish Federation. I attended the American Diabetes Association Political Roast featuring LA City Councilmember Nithya Raman. I attended the Tri-West Neighborhood Watch Group. I attended the LaRox Proclamation at the Roxy Theater, where our mayor presented a certification. I attended the Friends of West Hollywood Elementary Schools Annual Gala at the Mondrian. It's great to support our local public school. I attended the 2025 West Hollywood Public Safety Awards Luncheon. Congratulations to all of our public safety awardees. Thank you for keeping us all safe in our city. I attended the West Hollywood Women of Leadership Awards Reception. The West Hollywood Women's Advisory Board with the Chamber of Commerce put on a very great event where we honored very outstanding women within our community. I attended a Project Angel food fundraiser. I attended the Betsedek Annual Gala Dinner. I attended the West Hollywood Picasso Pet Mayor Installation for our new mayor, Pet Shadrack... Mayor... Pet Mayor Shadrack. It was a great event, and I look forward to serving Mayor Shadrack in their next administration. I attended the USC Lambda LGBTQ Alumni Association Gala, where I presented certs from the city of West Hollywood. I attended the Los Angeles County LGBTQ+ Elected Officials Lackle Event held in West Hollywood. I attended the UCLA Williams Institute Gala. I attended the LGBTQ Family Group Brunch at the Abbey this past Sunday. It was amazing. Over 25 LGBTQ families came. We had a special distinguished guest. Our mayor came and spoke to so many families and kids. The fire department came and allowed kids to take pictures with them. The kids were able to go into the fire engines, take photos, toot the horns. It was a great community event where we got to build on LGBTQ family values with kids. So, it was such a treat. And thank you, Mayor Byers, for coming and being our distinguished guest for that day. And last but not least, I attended the West Hollywood Rainbow Key Awards. Congratulations to all of our amazing awardees. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Erickson, would you like to go next? Can I ask you to go next?
Yes, of course. This is a predominantly LGBTQ city. I don't know if people forgot that. It's over 50% LGBTQ, and it's a little...
Do you need a moment to get ready? I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I'm fine. I'm a little shaken up by the sheer homophobia of it all. Additionally, so in terms of meetings, I attended the Sexual Healing Events, the Mazan Briefing on Hunger, Contract Cities Board, and Legislative Committee Meetings, the CPA Board of Directors Meeting, the NLC Event Conference in DC, the Liability Trust Fund and Oversight Meeting, the Hurstery Awards. Congrats, Yola. The SCAG Rep Regional Council Meeting, the WeHo Reads Event, the Jfed LA Local Legislators Meet and Greet. I had my Saturday event in Plummer Park, the Women of Leadership Awards, another legislative meeting for the Clean Power Awards, the Public Safety Awards, the Luncheon, Rainbow Key Awards, the Williams Institute Gala, Picasso Pets. Congratulations, Mayor Shadrack, Pet Mayor Shadrack. I know she's somewhere up... He's up there somewhere in a tree, safe and sound. Congrats again. Additionally, I wanted to commend Pickle, as well as other drag leaders, for resilience against the ongoing budget cuts that they are seeing in terms of cuts that are happening from the federal government, going all the way to certain cities, and how they've already been pulled from funding, and that's very unfortunate and sad. But I want to thank our drag laureate for steadying the ship and leading the way. And then additionally, I want to thank Danny and the team for providing that update on cameras. I've been getting a few comments from businesses and residents about when it's happening. Those are all.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Meister, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended several community events, including Public Safety Awards, Picasso Pets, Pet Mayor Installation, congratulations to the new pet mayor, and the Rainbow Key Awards. I was there for the welcome. I represented the Westside Cities Cog at the SCAG Executive Administration Committee Meeting, the SCAG Energy and Environment Committee Meeting, and the SCAG Regional Council Meeting. This was my last meeting as the representative, as 10 electeds from the Westside Cities Cog cities decided to vote for a fairly new council member from the city of Santa Monica. As a regional council member, I represented our diverse cities with fairness and balance. With regard to the Energy and Environment Committee, my questions, comments, and votes reflected our collective passion to protect the environment in a highly urbanized region. If you have any doubts, ask the nature conservancy. As some tried to water down SCAG's new green tool, which they helped build, I fought to strengthen it. Whatever politics were behind this vote, I was not the only loser. And although the vote was sad and humiliating for me personally, I believe that it was much more humiliating for the city of West Hollywood and the Westside City Cog as a whole, as both bodies lost out on a leadership position at SCAG. As Vice Chair of the Energy and Environment Commission Committee, I was also on the Executive Administration Committee. I was asked to run for Chair of the EEC Committee, which would have provided additional visibility for the city and for the Westside Cities Cog. Lastly, I was included in the recent conversations on resilience, as I added a unique perspective as someone in the field of emergency management. The absence of some West Hollywood council members speak as loud as the one who was there voting against his own city. I'm disappointed, and the West Hollywood community should be too. Thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Meister. Vice Mayor Heilman?
I've attended a couple of community events, and that's it.
Thank you very much. My attendance, in addition to a number of community events, I attended the Clean Power Alliance Energy Planning and Legislative Meetings, as well as the board meeting this past month, the Cal Cities Transportation Policy Committee Meeting. And I just want to thank all of our community members and our staff in the Recreation Division, as well as across the many departments, for what was such a fun and delightful pet mayor swearing in. My cat, Shadrack, is the first cat mayor of the city, and she takes that title very proudly. We saw that just today, our city issued a letter, well, maybe in the past couple of weeks, but we'll call it today, as a first act of her administration, submitted a letter of support for a piece of legislation that would extend the ban on declawing efforts. It was an initiative our city led on back in the early 2000s, I believe, and that the state is now taking up this initiative, just reflects so well on the many progressive policies our city is so bold and brave in leading in, especially when it comes to care for animals. So, at the event, we were really happy to have the Assembly Office there to share another piece of ambitious legislation that Assembly Members of Burr is tackling, and that is a pet reunification plan as part of disasters. It would task local governments with coming up with, as part of their emergency plans, a plan to protect and care for animals in the community. We imagine our apartment buildings, all of our many neighbors, and our knowledge of how many other, you know, heartbeats are behind those doors and the sort of resources and network we can extend to care for all of those creatures. And so, besides our Field Director of Joshua Marin-Mora, who came to speak about that, we talked about a number of different initiatives, the glue trap ordinance that had happened and other things of such. So, it was just a great event. It was fun and silly and such a perfect way to, you know, party with a purpose, I think, in our community, and I'm grateful for that. We'll wear the pussy hats next time, Councilmember Meister. And I do want to thank you for your service and leadership as part of the region for SCAG for so long. We appreciate all of that. I think, I also just want to say that today was the first Food Day event that ever happened in the city. And when we think about food and what we consume, there was an aspect about caring for animals and creatures and the planet in that way, too. So, I thought it was a really great way to have the last couple of days in our city, thinking about care for all life on this planet of ours and those reflections of values from the city. So, thank you all for a great meeting tonight. The city council is now adjourned. It is 9:42 PM. The next regular meeting will take place on Monday, April 21st, at 6:00 PM here at West Hollywood Public Park Meeting Room, Council Chambers. Have a great night.